Good. Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. This is a school board briefing and the time is 1:00 P. M. Has the front lobby been cleared? Yep. Awesome. Thank you. Today's agenda includes six items. Per board protocol, each board member should strive for four minutes for initial comment, two for follow-up, with a total of 10 minutes during the discussion. Let's proceed to the first item. We will begin with construction change order, October 23rd. Presenter is Frederick Ross, Executive Director, Operational Planning and Project Management.
He is not here.
And he is not here.
Oh, and look who's here. Tina's here.
I'm not sure how to make it full screen, but good afternoon, board members. Dr. Bernier and Mrs. DeWey Bruno. I have the October change order report today. And for October, we had a total of $3,210,863.17 for direct material purchases for all the projects for October. We received back for tax savings for direct material purchases, $182,403.69. For non-direct material purchase orders, we had $1.6 million. And contingency adjustments for all of our projects for October was $179,000. And within that, it's hard to see. We had four change orders for Franklin Park Elementary rebuild, four change orders for Riverdale High School renovation, and one change order for G. Weaver hips. And then on the next page, it describes what the change orders were for. Also, in the month of October, we had contingency adjustments for the Fort Myers Technical College renovation and one for Riverdale High School. And that's our report for the month of October. Do you have any questions?
Board members, do you have any comments or questions? Yes.
You have to remember me.
That's right. I will scan and then come back to you always.
No, thank you. No, my question is for the board attorney. I am assuming that these Cotton Commercial change orders are the result of your efforts to settle the contract with Cotton?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move to the next item on the agenda. It is the Independent Sales Surtax Oversight Committee while they're getting set up. Our presenters today are Steve Schimpf, ISOC Committee Chair, and Amy Desmore, Chief Financial Officer. Steve is not here. I don't see him. So Amy must be doing something.
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Schimpf was unavailable at the last minute in order to be able to attend today. Dr. Desmore, in his stead, will be taking the brunt of presenting. Again, this is part of the Oversight Committee's responsibility to give you a board update regularly in compliance with our audit findings. So I want to thank Dr. Desmore in particular for making sure that she was on top of making sure that this presentation happened in this quarter prior to the winter holiday. Dr. Desmore?
Good afternoon, Dr. Bernier, members of the board. I'm sorry, just a little mean. Mr. Schimpf couldn't make it today. Was really hoping that someone off the committee could because I think that is very powerful when you see members of the Independent Sales Surtax Oversight Committee presenting this in public so that you could have kind of gotten a glimpse of what that looks like when we do it at different spots. But I'll do my best to do my best, Mr. Schimpf, today. So just wanted to give some information as far as what the community is seeing when our members of the ISOC Committee go out to present this information to the public so that the public knows what's going on with our sales tax. So this has been done in several places and we'll talk about that after the presentation is over. This is an overview of what we typically or what they typically talk about during the presentation, an overview of exactly what the ISOC is and the half penny sales tax, why it's needed, who benefits, and what the impact is across our community. And so Mr. Schimpf typically does, and Mr. Parrish has done this presentation as well, a really good job is to explaining what the Sales Tax Oversight Committee is. Some people haven't heard of that, but they want to, and we emphasize and stress here that it's made up of community members, not anybody that's associated with the district. And their sole purpose is to oversee the use of the sales tax revenues and make sure that they can attest that we are doing with those sales tax revenues what we as a district promised that we would do. And so the committee members do have an experience across a variety of industries and we do strive to reflect on that committee, the racial and the ethnic composition of our community. This lists the qualifications of what, who the ISOC members are and what they are. You all know this as you all appoint them, but in that they are, of course, approved by you and that they have those staggering terms. So we make sure that we are updating the public as to exactly what the qualifications of the ISOC are. And then what is the half penny sales tax? That we approve that or that voters approve that in November of 2018 for 10 years? And that the major categories of authorized expenditures, of course, being construction and major renovation, safety and security, technology, and maintenance. And each quarter, we will update and report, the district will, to the ISOC, on exactly what the expenditures have been inside of each of those categories. The why, of course, we cover with the community. The increased number of students, the decrease in funding sources from other areas, and also the age of our facilities. And so we go through in this presentation and give them some details, some statistics about our district that sometimes we become a little numb to just because we know it, but people in the community are surprised to hear, you know, 100,000 students in our K-12 schools, that they're surprised to hear that we're the 32nd largest district in the nation. And so, and that we've increased almost 20,000 students since 2008 and we continue to grow. We know that because we live it, but members of the community sometimes don't know or really can grasp the magnitude of where we are and how we do it in our community every day. So good to have those statistics here. Also 5,800 adult students, which many people just don't know. You know, so talking about our technical colleges, our public service academy, our general ed population or GED students, talking about that those students, 5,800 of them have benefit as well, and over 11,000 employees. The district is and continues to be one of the largest employers in the county. And so all those 11,000 employees benefit from the sales tax as well. And very interesting statistics that nearly one in every three residents of Lee County are directly impacted by our district either through education or employment and/or employment. And so that just is a very telling statistic as to how much impact the school district has across the community, not just for our students, not just for people who work here, but the entire community really in every aspect. So we cover with them what services are offered here across our schools, including all of our support facilities, including virtual school, our technical colleges, as we covered. And then these statistics also seem to be very surprising for people as they kind of grasp how long we have been here, right? That we have 21 schools that are more than 60 years old. And as we know, inside of, you know, our own homes, as we age, we need more and more maintenance. And so this age and condition statistic speaks to people in terms of understanding how that impacts the resources that are needed and what needs to be done at each of our individual schools. As they continue to age, of course, they need those renovations. One of the things that we're careful to make sure to explain to the community is that the ISOC ensures that all expenses are in compliance with the voter referendum requirements. But the ISOC doesn't decide what those things will be, right? So in this, how the facilities are selected, we explain that the district team recommends things to the capital committee, which makes recommendations to the superintendent. Ultimately, those things are done that we take action on. And then the ISOC reviews those things that we have taken action on to ensure that we are in compliance with what the voter referendum said we would do. So there is that delineation of duties or that separation of who is responsible for doing what. Since June, or collected through June of 2003, almost $441 million in sales tax collections. And we've expended almost $287 million of that. We are on track. Those numbers put us on track with the budget projections we have made. And sometimes we have a question about why is there that lag? That difference between what we've collected and what we've expended? And we kind of explain the answer to that because some of those things that we have built are longer-term projects. It just takes a longer time period to expend. And if it's a new school, then it's going to be over the period of the sales tax in which we pay that new school back, right? In terms of its debt service. And then always remembering to explain to people that 20% of these collections approximately are from tourists. So we're able to take advantage of the benefit of tourism within our community to kind of be able to support our school district in that process. We highlight some of the new projects that have happened within the sales tax and what the impact is of that. And so you see three of them here that are highlighting some of our new construction that happened within sales tax. Amontesar, the newest elementary in Lehigh, Gateway High, which opened a couple of years ago, and then the new Lehigh Acres Middle as well. So we try to highlight some of the newest projects that have happened there as far as new construction and then as far as renovation so that everyone knows that the new Franklin project, huge renovation and rebuild that's going on, was sales tax funded, sales tax impacted, and was a benefit directly from the sales tax referendum, as well as the La Mule Teal renovation and the Lehigh Senior High School renovation. So I was trying to update that in order to make sure that people know the latest projects that are going on. And a great statistic that we like to make sure that people understand is that 100% of our schools, every single one of them, have realized some benefit from a sales tax investment. And so in our decisions, we make sure that that benefit is spread to all of our schools, 100%. Two renovations that we have going on right now, the Riverdale High School and Cypress Lake Middle, which I believe Phase 1 is coming for approval, maybe this evening. But 6,000 new seats, new or renovated seats, will be completed by 2025. So directly related to the benefit of the sales tax, 6,000 new seats, which is a wonderful thing. And then increased safety and security, as we know in the community, safety and security are paramount in terms of the concerns and the questions that the community has as far as what's going on within our schools. So 100% again of our schools benefited from security improvements directly related to sales tax funding. These are just a few. Of course, we don't disclose all of the details, but these are just some of the things that we can talk about that we have done with our sales tax funding. And then technology improvements as well. 22,000 students received a sales tax-funded Chromebook for remote instruction during the pandemic. And then that one-to-one relationship continued even after that. So the impact that sales tax has had as far as what we've been able to do for technology around the district has truly impacted the education that our students have every day from the pandemic and continue to have. And then going back to what we talked about in terms of the age of our facilities, maintenance projects are, again, another very paramount and important projects that we need to conduct. So across the district, these are some examples of some of the maintenance projects that we've done with our sales tax funds. Because we know that the better that we can maintain our schools, the better that those environments will contribute to learning. And so those are, these are the types of projects that sales tax impacts so that we feel like has the most benefit in terms of the environment of education across each of our facilities. And so then we talk about, okay, we did, we talked about what was and what is and now what will be. So will the need continue? So we anticipate, which we'll talk about a little bit later today, additional student population growth even through 2031. We talk about our aging facilities, over 40 years of aging across our facilities and then other capital funding sources, other funding sources that we anticipate to receive. None on the horizon at this time. And all three factors lead to the fact that, you know, there is continued need for our sales tax because all of the factors that brought us to where we were in 2018 continue to persist. We make sure that the community knows where they can find additional information about the sales tax. So our sales tax dashboard, which is full of information as far as all of the updated sales tax reports, as far as our collections, individual projects that are ongoing at the moment. It's updated every single evening with expense information, with revenue information, all of our local media stories, kind of FAQs about capital versus operating funds so people understand the difference between the two, as well as everything ISOC. So if people want to know what was talked about in any ISOC meeting, what the agenda was, what the minutes were, and in fact, video recordings of the meetings themselves, they can look on our Change for Change dashboard website and be able to get all of that information. So we make sure that they have access to that. And just to keep the board up to date as we are supposed to quarterly, just to give you the ISOC current report on their recommendations. The last meeting for the ISOC was held on September 21. Next one is on this Thursday, December 7. The draft meeting minutes from the prior meeting, September 21st, you have, we provided in the board docs for this meeting, so you have those draft minutes. But in there, you'll see that, in their draft, because the committee will have to approve them on Thursday, so they are draft. But in those minutes, you'll see that the ISOC Committee did vote unanimously that the district's use and expenditure of the surtax proceeds up to that point were consistent with the plan and the approved project list. So that is noted within the minutes. And then also, the community presentations that the committee recommended that they do in June, of course, have been proceeding. We've presented, or the ISOC Committee representatives have presented to the Horizon Council, the Foundation of Lee County Public Schools, the NPHC, or the National Panhellenic Council. And I believe leadership is sterile, if I'm not mistaken. And then upcoming, we have several recommendations of different organizations to hit, including Rotary's. But the committee on Thursday will have to accept that list and have some people sign up for that list. But there's a recommended list to proceed from January through March of continued presentations to do across the community. So that is the extent of our ISOC briefing or ISOC quarterly update to the board. So I turn it over to Dr. Bernier for additional comments.
First and foremost, thank you, Dr. Desmore. I really appreciate you being able to fill in today. I know you had a desire to be up there with other help. And thank you for your diligence in order to find some other members. I think one of the things that many of us had the opportunity to see was Mr. Schimpf present before, recently before the Horizon Council. He does an excellent job telling the story of the school district and the importance of the half penny sales, as well as helping the community to understand their role in oversight to ensure we're spending it correctly. Look forward to any questions you may have and some discussion.
Board members, do you have any comments or questions? Mrs. Morgan?
So just following on what Dr. Bernier said. I wasn't able to attend the Horizon Council meeting, but I did listen to the recording. And Mr. Schimpf does a great job and he is clearly well-respected in the community. So if you haven't had an opportunity to see or hear him present, I encourage you to listen to his presentation at the Horizon Council. That's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Patrica?
Thank you. Dr. Desmore, I really appreciate the presentation. And you have a really good way of breaking down difficult information and helping us all to understand it. So this is not personal. Steve Schimpf's presence, you said it to start the meeting, brings automatic credibility to the report because he's independent. And I look at our website and I look at our report and nowhere in there are the names and photographs of our ISOC members. I think that if anyone, I would love to see, I would love to see pictures and names for all of our advisory committees, but specifically for ISOC because I think that not just Mr. Schimpf, but so many members of that committee are very well-respected in this community, business leaders who have a proven track record of success and independently and objectively bring their opinion and their expertise to this committee. So as I look at our Independent Sales Surtax Oversight Committee webpage, it's very nondescript. Nothing jumps off the page at me. I can't tell you, sitting here as a member of the school board, who all 15 members are because my memory just isn't that good. And I'd love that to be out there for the community. That being said, the work has been fantastic. I will not be on this board in 2026, but I'll vote yes. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Jordan?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Desmore, for this presentation. And I was at the Horizon Council when Mr. Schimpf did do his presentation. And what I was amazed how the community, business leaders, all jumped up and just almost like stopped him and they were like, let's do this now. So they were all on board to proceeding and making sure that this continues on because of what has taken place. So I really, I was definitely amazed how quickly they stood up and they were like backing it up without anybody even going out to say, hey, let's do this. So I thought that was really good. And then also too, I wanted to, because I know they mentioned the Chromebooks too. We are very blessed that we were able to do all that. Because even this past weekend at FSBA, I was listening to some of the members going, boy, I wish we had the money to get Chromebooks for every single one of our kids because they do not have that. So we are definitely blessed here in this county. And again, thank you.
Yes. Mrs. Giavennelli?
Thank you. I would agree with you, Ms. Patrica. I think he gives credence. I also watched the video as well. It actually popped up on my YouTube and I was like, oh, I need to see that. So it was really nice to have that opportunity. One of the things through the chair to the superintendent, I just wanted, RSM had made recommendations regarding ISOC and their capital committees and stuff like that. And I just wanted to make sure that we were all compliant with those recommendations.
At this time, ma'am, we are. I know Dr. Desmore is providing a chart to the school board regarding each one of the findings. And I can confidently report that we are following RSM's recommendations and those deadlines have been met and adjusted. This is one example during COVID and then during Arcane Ian. We missed some of these required quarterly updates. So we're making sure that we're following through.
Awesome. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other comments, board members? Dr. Desmore, you always do such a great job. Thank you for stepping in and flying solo today. I am on this committee that you're right. Ms. Patrica, I think it would be so worth it to have a profile picture or something so that we know who this, in all committees, quite frankly, I think would be very helpful. Very grateful to the committee members that give up their evenings to help us here at the district. And yes, December 6th, that 6th is the next meeting, which is this Thursday for, at 7?
December 7.
December 7th, sorry. December 7th, at the same time as the Nutcracker. So, all right. Thank you. If that's all?
I just have one question really regarding this. I want to be clear because there seems like some direction has been provided. We have been in touch with committee members about photos. Not everybody is, people are sensitive to their photo. And they do have the right to say that they wish that their photo not be presented. We will readdress and have some conversation with the committee and additional board committees as well. But as you've talked about recruitment and some of the things that this board has discussed in order to get people to volunteer for some of our committees, I wouldn't want a photograph to be an issue of the individual no longer continuing to serve. I do believe that names are vital for the community to understand who's serving in these roles. So we'll have So we'll have, we'll see whether we can get that added last minute to the agenda for December 7.
Yes, Ms. Giavennelli?
Rather it be an individual photo, what if it was a group photo, maybe? I mean, I like Mrs. Patrica's idea, truthfully, with the bio, but, because it just puts like credence back to who is serving. It also tells our story better, and our, I believe our website's not that user-friendly. And you mentioned that the information is not there, and, you know, and I, I think it's important that this is part of our stakeholders in telling the story, and it validates what is being done and the work that's being done there with the ISOC committee. So I don't know, maybe just a group, a group photo versus...
I will be happy to speak to the ISOC committee on December 7. I was planning to attend. I know we have a lot of things, we not only have the Nutcracker, but we have another presentation going on down in Estero. And I will suggest a group picture as well. And I will try to convey the board's desire for the photographs to lend credence and support to the work that this committee is doing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on, next item on the agenda is the RSM presentation. Our presenters are Matthew Blondell, RSM Director, and Weiss Campbell, RSM Manager.
We're here today to discuss our audit plan for the coming year. Weiss will go through some of the high-level explanations of what the items were that were included in it. This audit plan was developed in coordination with the Audit Committee at their meetings in September and in October, and then we prepared the Statement of Work that, that included the scope and approach for each of the audits that are part of that audit plan. So it includes some new audits for the coming year, as well as follow-up on the prior issued audits, and a risk assessment towards the end of the, the year to inform future audit plans going forward. So I'll turn it over to Weiss to kind of go through a high level of what was included in the plan, and we're certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Perfect. Well, thank you, Matt. I appreciate it and appreciate your time today. What I'll briefly do is just give a high-level understanding of the specific audits that we've proposed in the SOW, and then just give a brief understanding of what the objective of each audit will be, and then we'll welcome any questions you may have regarding the specific procedures that were included in the SOW. So the first of the four specific audits that we are including is the Physical Security Audit. So this is certainly a popular topic and a, and a one that, that is forefront at many of the districts that we're working at.
Getting your presentation? No, you don't have one? No?
Okay. Excuse me. The primary objective of the Physical Security Review is really to evaluate adherence to the security protocols, procedures, compliance with state, state statutes, and really just evaluate compliance with those policies and procedures that are in place. So that'll include the reporting processes that are in place, the timeliness, availability, and of course, the completeness of the supporting documentation in place for any safety concerns or issues that are brought to the attention of the district. We will also evaluate the follow-up process for any of these identified instances or issues that come across the district's table. So this, the goal of this assessment isn't necessarily to go to each individual site to perform that, it's really to, again, evaluate compliance and adherence to the policies and procedures and safety policies that are in place, and ensure that there isn't any gaps with what state statute requires, and make sure that the, the right protocols are in place. The second item that we have included is a pretty, pretty traditional internal audit. It's for timekeeping. So this is specifically employee timekeeping, and the goal here is just simply to verify that on a sample basis, that hours that are paid are mathematically accurate, that they're complete, of course, that the location and security of employee records, that that's being accounted for, and that there's appropriate internal controls to protect that information, certainly the sensitive information. Segregation of duties will certainly be one of the items that we will look at as part of this process as well, and make sure that there's appropriate segregation within the timekeeping process. And then the pre, the pre-payroll monitoring and exception reporting process. So that's really the oversight and the monitoring controls that are in place to make sure that everything is complete and accurate, and that any abnormalities are caught and addressed timely. The third audit that we have is of asset management. So this is, again, on a sample basis, an opportunity for us to take a look at the information that is actually in the system, that it's being tracked, and to ensure that acquisitions, disposals, and transfers are properly accounted for in the system. So we will examine segregation of duties again here to make sure that there's appropriate segregation within the context of asset tracking, recording, monitoring, and reporting. So those are the four primary sub-processes that we would be looking at, and then, of course, the process and documentation around the periodic inventories that are performed to make sure that those are complete and accurate, and that those internal controls are addressing the primary objective of the function of asset management. The fourth and final is the fleet operations, and this is really us looking at and reviewing the procedures for retiring and disposing of fleet assets, and evaluating the routine, scheduled, and the corrective maintenance procedures that are performed. We also, during this audit, will look at segregation of duties to, again, make sure that there's appropriate segregation within some of these key functions within fleet management. The last two items on the SOW are our traditional IA standard audit, so that'll include follow-up, which we've touched on, on previously issued audit reports. We have six audit reports that includes one of the IT-related audits that was performed, so that one, of course, is sensitive in nature, but we will perform follow-up on the six outstanding audit reports. I believe we have 26 open audit items, so the follow-up will address all of those, where we will go back, make sure that the remediation plans that were, that were advised, that they would be performed, we will go in and make sure that they were actually performed. And then finally, the fiscal year 25 risk assessment. So next summer, what we will do is perform a risk assessment to update our top 10 high-risk inherent risk areas, and what that, the performance of that will do is give us guidance on where to direct internal audit resources in the future. So with that, I'll pause, because I know I've went through quite a bit just there, and we'll welcome any questions.
Board members, any comments or questions? Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. I am anxious for the Physical Security Report, not because I'm concerned that we're doing anything wrong, but because blind spots in that area can be particularly concerning, I guess is the word that I would use. My question is probably for Dr. Bernier through the chair, how, and I don't need this answer today, but how does this expenditure compared to past year's expenditures from RSM, if you could put that in a board update in anticipation of voting on this at an action meeting, I'd really appreciate it. And I think that's it. Those are my comments for today. Thank you.
I believe Ms. Jordan had a question?
Yes, thank you. That was one of mine, so thank you, Ms. Patrica. And then the other one is, I know that you're working with the Audit Committee to come up with these, but where does the, the board come in? Because I don't believe that they're, that they're asking us, when in the past years, it was, we would come up with what we thought was important, or, or we had some kind of maybe concerns about. So that's why I'm trying to find out where does, who's actually picking these, and would you say that these are the ones that stand out more than other things?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Great question. So originally, the risk assessment, I believe we did one in 2019, and then an updated one in 2021, where that's where that would have included individual meetings with each of the board members to discuss topics of interest with the board members. The Audit Committee wasn't in place during those risk assessments, but if they were, well, they were in the last, the most recent one, we, we met with the Audit Committee members. We also meet with the superintendent and senior leadership to understand perspectives of everyone in, in terms of developing an audit plan. We take that and couple that with our conversations that we're having with other school districts that we perform these services for, and that was how we developed the top 10 that we had brought to the board a couple of years ago. From the top 10, we selected some audits, the audits that we completed this past year. These were, some of these, with the exception of Fleet Operations, were audits that were included in that top 10. Fleet Operations was added just based on some more recent conversations that we'd had with the board attorney and some other items, which is why that was added kind of this time. But Physical Security and Timekeeping and Asset Management would have been included in that original risk assessment. And so the last item on here is a new risk assessment, so that we can have that, that targeted time with the board members, with the Audit Committee members, with superintendent, to update where the risks are from everybody's perspectives throughout the district, to then bring a new top 10 to the board for future years.
And if I can just add one, one comment to that. So when we generate that risk assessment, that's intended to provide a level of guidance to the Audit Committee so that they can make a determination on what is best to recommend to the board, so that the board can select the audits that are performed. We perform the risk assessment so that there's an inventory of what we call inherently high-risk areas, so that the Audit Committee can make the determination of where the resources are best to be spent, and then make that recommendation to the board, and if the board agrees, then that's how we proceed. So they, they have been briefed on these. We met with them in September and as well in October, so they are aware of these, these audits that we're discussing today.
I'm sorry, who's they?
The Audit Committee. I apologize.
Okay. So, so this is my thing. So the Audit Committee is something that we put together, the board, but then you, so far, you've, I've heard you mention the attorney and superintendent, that you have conversations with them. Again, so as auditors, you are the board, the board auditors. So that's why I'm trying to make sure that we stay in the loop of what is actually taking place. I mean, that's how I feel. I don't know about my other colleagues up here, but I just, that's why I was asking that question. So thank you very much for explaining that.
Those conversations are, they influence the risk assessment. So we meet with a variety of stakeholders so that we can understand enterprise risks, so that, so when we meet with the Audit Committee, the board, the superintendent, and some of that leadership, it's really to make sure that we're incorporating all the risk that we can, that, that's in place, certainly inherently high-risk, so that we can track that, provide that guidance to the Audit Committee who has the technical, technical expertise, and then they come to the board and look for direction on how to, how to direct us going forward.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Persons?
Basically, these are their recommendations to us. I mean, we have to approve this plan. I think the Audit Committee probably should come before and say, and I thought that was on a schedule, but, but, you know, they met and came up with several, I'm on the Audit Committee, so they came up with several different ones, and then they narrowed on these. So that's sort of how they, they can't tell us what to do, though. You're right about that. So these are the recommendations and the follow-up. So that's basically how actually a lot of the committees sort of seem to work that way. Construction comes up with ideas and things, too. So, but we do have the final say. That's all.
Yes, Board Member Giavennelli?
So actually, some of this was on my list, and just for, this list came from the prior board, and I think what Ms. Jordan's really trying to say is this didn't come from this board, and y'all haven't had opportunity to give your input to RSM individually like we did prior to, to this list. So I think that's the clarification that I think y'all should have that opportunity like we did. We actually sat down with them, like they mentioned, on two occasions, and y'all, and that was done prior to y'all coming on the board this past year. So I think that somehow you should have that opportunity, because you might, after being here a year now, you might have different ideas and, and thoughts that others that may not be on the list, or it might be on their list, their long list, you know, this is the shortlist. So I just think it's opportunity for you to have that one-on-one conversation with them. It was very beneficial for me. I felt, especially when they, they came back and did it the second time, that was, it was really enlightening, because the fleet was on my list, but apparently was on the long list, and now it's on the shortlist, so I'm excited. So, thank you. And that's all I just wanted to say, that I think the new board members need to have the opportunity. So thank you.
Any other board member comments? Any other board member comments, questions? Mr. Persons?
One thing not mentioned on here was the Riverdale, which is a separate scope, but we did have input as this whole board into that, and find out how it went from one price tag to a much larger price tag. So just wanted to point that out, but that's not part of the normal, that's a separate contract.
Dr. Bernier?
That, that is a separate scope of work. I've responded to Ava, who was not here today, she's another member of the team. Specifically, that they needed an executive sponsor. Whenever you have an audit of a specific item, you want to make sure that, that the auditor understands who ultimately at the cabinet level is responsible, is their point of contact and their go-to. I have identified for Ava, our Chief Operation Officer, Larry Stevens, for the Riverdale project, and will begin to proceed forward. That's a separate scope of work from this particular audit. I'm going to try to give RSM an opportunity here, and I don't want to speak too much, because I don't want to speak on your behalf. When you think of the future and moving forward, can you talk a little bit about what the, I know you went over it quickly, what the risk assessment piece would be doing to help the board and the Audit Committee focus on future projects and developing a new list?
Sure. So what we would do to facilitate that process is we would meet with each of the board members, and we would give you a little bit of a, a heads up to say, hey, we're going to meet to talk about the risk assessment. If there's anything that's on your mind that you believe is a particularly risky area or something that you think would make sense to, for, you know, us as your internal auditors to consider, please bring that to the meeting, and, you know, we're happy to discuss that, to obtain your perspectives on that. We'll have those same meetings with the Audit Committee, the same meetings with the superintendent and the executive leadership within the district. Like I said, we would take that information, combine that with, with our just experience in working with other school districts throughout Florida, to ultimately put together what we, what we see and hear as the top 10 risks for the board, and that kind of goes on to the, the list, so to speak, to pull from for the audit plans going forward. You know, every, we do meet with each of you individually, at least annually, just to have an update. Of course, if anything comes up in those meetings, that's, that can certainly change that audit, that, that top 10. We kind of view that top 10 as ever-changing. You know, something may not be on the radar today, but may, in a month, all of a sudden be something very important. And so we, we view that as a, as a live document, so to speak, that is always kind of being pulled from. And then officially, every year, the board would then approve the list of audits for us to perform throughout the year, which then, of course, we perform and then, and then report back to you. And so that, those conversations are invaluable, especially with the board to, to understand your perspectives and what you're hearing, what you're seeing in your positions, and what you're hearing from your constituents, and so forth.
Any other comments? Yes?
I just have a clarification question. Excuse me. I just have a clarification question for Ms. Patrica, for Ms. Patrica. I got the information about the cost of the physical end of security, but I also, as you continued, thought that you wanted a comparison from previous audits. Can you just re-clarify what you're asking?
That's exactly what I'm looking for. What have we paid annually to RSM over the past several years? Please and thank you. That, I mean, I could, I can probably search my email and my files and find it, but I, I suspect you have it someplace easy. Thank you.
So question for the board. Do you want to bring this scope of work for consideration at tonight's action meeting, or do we want more information? Do we have any direction we want to discuss? Ms. Morgan?
I'm happy to bring it forward as is. So I'm good.
Mr. Fisher?
Question for RSM. So in regards to this SOW, excuse me, scope of work, any of the work that you've mentioned, can that proceed without that, without the work, the Statement of Work? Or any preliminary parts of it?
No. I mean, we would need the scope of work approved by the board. If there were, if you wanted to pick one, you know, to get started on, if that, if there was more discussion that the board wanted to have, you know, you could pick one to get started on, and we could start on that one. But no, we would need, you know, the board's approval and a signed agreement to be able to move forward.
Yes, Mrs. Patrica?
Thank you. I'm just going to feel more comfortable acting on it if I have those numbers. So may I ask the superintendent if you...
Absolutely.
Are you going to be able to get those to me before tonight, do you think? before tonight, do you think?
I think I can make the request, and we can begin to work on getting you those numbers. I'm looking out at the audience. I'm seeing someone nod ahead. So I believe that we can. I just would stop short of making a promise without being able to talk to the impacted staff member.
All right. I appreciate that. I just, I need some context before I can ask.
So more information before we bring it up?
Okay. And thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Can I ask RSM again? As our employee, do you think there's a difference between bringing it tonight or next year? I guess it is.
Can I? Ultimately, you know, it's up to the board. I know we are already on a fairly compact schedule, just to be able to continue working through these, but, you know, obviously, we want the board to be as comfortable as you need to be to move forward. So I don't want to, we don't, you know, I don't want to rush things, but yeah, we do have a compacted schedule just to get through everything as it is. We do have proposed dates in the SOW, just so you know. So, you know, any change in the action date will certainly influence that. I just want to add that context as well.
Board Member Patrica?
So I think I might, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Fisher, but I'm, perhaps you're sharing the same discomfort I have with being briefed and acting on the same day. Is, am I reading that correctly?
May I answer to Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, as I said, I don't want to obviously hold up anything, but I want to make sure we have double-checked everything. So, I mean, I could go either way on it, but I don't know. I have a little bit of concern, I'll say that.
So I would feel really comfortable with separating out physical security, voting on that tonight, and then waiting on the numbers so the superintendent's not rushed, and we can all dig into it a little bit more before acting on the rest of it. May I propose that and see if there's support?
Ms. Jordan?
The fees are already here on this. So for the physical security, it's $70,000. So they have a breakdown for every single one of these that they have proposed to us in this, and the physical security should be right now, December. So it's December, and that is the amount for that particular audit.
So if we hold, go ahead.
Through the chair, to the attorney. Can we break out one and approve it tonight? I mean, is that, or is it a package deal? That's, I guess, the question I have concern.
That's really the question for RSM in terms of their scope of work, and obviously, the contract would have to be redrafted to pull an item out. So.
We can do that relatively easily, and we're happy to do that.
So can, so direction from the board? Do you want to proceed with this this evening as is, or do we, and pull the item out that's in question, or what is, what would we like to do? Thoughts? Ms. Giavennelli?
I'd be okay with pulling it out. I think if we just pull out the one item, then I think we could stay on the timeline because, and then as long as in January, the first meeting that we have this back on the agenda, I would, I would agree at this point to do that, to allow, to get the information. But I hate to deviate from the timeline, and I think that would still keep us on the timeline with allowing them to proceed with the physical security, want piece of it, and then the rest of it in January. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Giavennelli. I would support a good cause item for physical security tonight. I do have a question through the chair, to the superintendent, just piggybacking on Ms. Patrica's. Is there a way to find out what the difference is on what the estimated fees were last time versus what the actual were? Where's that going to be?
I think, so if I'm understanding the question correctly, when we look at a proposed fee schedule like we have within the document in our board docs, and I'll reference back to physical security for $70,000, I believe the question is, I certainly know that I can get pretty quickly what we've paid in the past for these types of audits and what the total costs have been over the past couple of years when RSM has been doing its work. I'm not sure, again, without asking staff, that I could get that to you tonight regarding the actual payout per audit. I may be able to give you an overall total. For instance, this total audit package is in the neighborhood of $340,000. We, I probably could get fairly quickly how much total we paid out below that approval or at that specific approval of $340,000. What I don't know is that I can break it down that quickly, maybe without some internal help from RSM and our chief financial officer. I just, I hesitate to make a promise without having talked to anybody.
Just want to follow up and get my microphone to work. It's like, follow up. I would be good with the overall number, so that, the estimates, not the breakdown for later on down the line, please.
Yes, sir.
Board Member Jordan?
Sorry. This is six, if we're asking for what we've already have spent, we have to look at, you know, what are you comparing that to? This is six items right now that they're trying to work with, and we went down this road with them years ago about, you know, their work. So I really, I think that we really need to be cautious of that, and, you know, what their, what their proposal is, is for six, six items right here that I'm looking at, with each one of them at a different cost. So for us to just say, can you give us the cost of what we've spent thus far? What does that mean? What does that mean? We'll know what we've, what we've spent, but will we know how many audits have been done and that, for that amount of money, and how the breakdown was of each and every one of those? So I am good with the way this is right now.
Mr. Parsons?
I'm good the way it is, too. I mean, I think that if you want to compare the overall price, I can understand that if it's way out of line or something. But these are, as Ms. Jordan said, this is like apples and oranges. I mean, we did P cards last time. I mean, that was, and other things, that it's just hard to compare the different audits because they all take different amounts of time, different amounts of our staff time. And of course, last year, we had a hurricane we were working around, too, which made everything sort of wacko. So, so I can either start with one or approve all of them. I'm good either way.
Yes, sir.
If I may. So this is a bit more than it was last year, but it also includes two, well, this audit plan is what we would represent as a fully functioning internal audit program because it has audits that would be conducted this year. It also has follow-up on prior audits, which was not in our audit plan last year, and it also has the updated risk assessment. So there's, so it is more than it was in years past because those two are, those are two new things that have been added for this year, but like, the risk assessment would not be on next year's audit plan because we would have just done it. We would have some minor updates that we would make, but it's really a concerted effort every two to three years. So, and like I said, follow-up is a very important part of a highly functioning internal audit program, and we didn't do them last year. And so now that we've got six open, there are six reports with open findings, you know, it's appropriate for us to begin following up to provide some closure on those prior audit issues for the board.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. What I was asking for was the difference in the audit initially, what they estimated with that audit within, I'm comparing it to itself. So that's what I'm asking, and I don't think it's unreasonable to ask financial questions when we're making any decision up here. Thank you.
Board Member Patrica?
And it's a data point that would be helpful to me as a board member making this decision. I don't think it hurts anything or anyone to go ahead and approve the physical security tonight and give all members the information that they seek in order to approve the overall plan. I am aware that this is higher than past years. I'd like to see how much higher, and I love Mr. Fisher's question of what was the estimate compared to what was actually spent. If memory serves me correctly, I think there was one instance where RSM actually charged above, but having that data in my hands when I make the decision for the overall plan is really important to me. So I ask my colleagues to please, please allow us to get the information that will make us comfortable making this decision. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica, can I just clarify? So are we okay as a board to proceed with RSM's request here? What was already on the agenda for tonight, but besides pulling out that item, pulling out that one thing you said it would be very easy to revise this contract and be able to vote on this tonight? Is that the direction from the board? Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, I think we're looking at, it would have to be good cause tonight because, but looking at just pulling out the security part and the rest of the way down. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Well, I actually would agree with Mr. Parsons because I started thinking about this. If we pull out an item, I just don't want to delay or derail any of this because we are looking at hiring an internal auditor, and this would, all this work could be done prior to, probably before we can get one hired, at least, and work with RSM and put them, set them up in a good place. So I, I would agree with Mr. Parsons. I would, I would go with pulling out and voting for the one item or all because, and because I agree that, I think it all, I trust their professionalism and their decisions in planning this out, so, and I like the schedule. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I just think it's important that everybody feels comfortable with a contract of this size, with the work that they're being given. So I would be happy to go with the one item tonight and to delay the balance until January with a little bit more information. Thank you.
Dr. Bernier?
Ma'am?
Do you, I thought you were this over here.
No, I was just touching my lip. I apologize.
Do you have any other questions, comments? Are we okay to proceed this evening?
I think there's an important question to ask, and because this is an item that is new and will be an add, so means we have to go write an item, we have to put material together, we now have to separate it. A separate contract now needs to be negotiated, I've heard. We only have three weeks remaining in December. I don't, I just want to be sure that we can get all that work done to meet the board's expectation that this physical security audit can commence at an appropriate time and making sure that all the proper documents are in place prior to that work beginning, because I did hear from RSM today that they would need that information before proceeding.
The signed contract, yes. What essentially I was planning to do was just basically duplicate the statement of work, pull out everything except for the physical security component. Everything else would remain the same, except it would just, and say, the physical security, and then addition allotted items to be discussed in a future, you know, future contract at future meeting, and then kind of have basically two documents that, other than the specific scope, look almost exactly the same. Treat them as two separate SOWs.
I'm in agreeance with that. Is that, we all agree?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
And Madam Chairman, just for clarification for the record, Mr. Blondell indicated that I had thoughts about the fleet operations. It was not the fleet operations. It was about employee timekeeping, giving some issues that had come to my attention.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is our 10-year capital plan. We welcome back up Dr. Amy Desmore, Chief Financial Officer, Larry Stevens, Chief Operations Officer, Dr. Adam Malloy, Director, Planning, Growth, and Capacity.
Madam Chair, if I may, as the team settles in, very excited about bringing the 10-year plan back. It really dovetails, dovetails very well with Dr. Desmore's earlier presentation regarding the ISOC committee, and really ties in the importance of a board decision moving forward in early January to ensure that we have memorialized a plan. There are some specific talking points that we do expect the board to weigh in on today. If we don't, I will try to help in to ensure that certain questions arise, for instance, around the size of particular schools, plans moving forward, the amount of debt that this plan does represent. But we have taken the feedback from August, where we knew we brought forward the true need of what the district needs in order to stay at pace with growth, but financially just was not feasible. So the team has worked very diligently since August, really trying to trim, using the capital committee and using the correct processes to get us to this point, so we can hear additional discussion on your behalf, so that we can utilize the remaining weeks of this semester and be prepared to bring something back in early January for your approval. This is important because this will memorialize the plan moving forward, and I guess I'll save those comments for the presentation's finale. So I will turn it over to the team, who will take you through the 10-year outlook for, from 2024 through 2033. Team?
Thank you. Dr. Bernier? My name is Frederick Ross, Executive Director of Facility Operation and Planning here for the school district. Good afternoon, members of the school board. We appreciate the opportunity to present the proposed 10-year capital plan for the school district of Lee County. This presentation, as Dr. Bernier mentioned, builds on our August 16th discussion, which we focus on the anticipated student growth and our proposed strategy to accommodate it. Allow me to introduce some of our key team members on the dais. We have our CFO, Dr. Amy Desmore, and our Director of Planning and Growth Capacity, Dr. Adam Malloy. Also in the audience, I see members of our Maintenance Department, our Director Barbara Sedino, and our Coordinator Danielle Jensen, who also worked heavily on this, as well as our COO, Mr. Larry Stevens. Today, we will delve into practical and strategic capital plan design to meet the evolving needs of our students, faculty, and community. Importantly, this plan operates within the confines of our budgetary limitations and revenue streams. Your input and collaboration are essential, particularly given the essential, these financial constraints. So let's begin. This agenda provides a clear roadmap for today's presentation by our staff. We'll initiate with a comprehensive project background, draw comparisons between our initial August 16th approach and the proposal we seek board approval for in January. Throughout this presentation, our focal point will remain on the anticipated student growth, all while strategically navigating the constraints proposed or posed by our budget and the potential loss of crucial capital revenue streams. A notable shift in our strategy involves a reduction in new schools, in new school construction, in our maintenance and modernization projects, and our property acquisitions. These adjustments have direct implications for our seat deficiencies impacting student learning environment through potential increasing class sizes and the use of portables. We'll also talk about our financial data associated with this proposal and provide insights that will inform the capital committee's recommendation. These recommendations will then be presented to the board for thorough discussion, review, and eventual approval. So I look at the project background. The adjustments made to the capital plan were carefully crafted by our team, taking into account several key factors that significantly shaped the revised plan. First and foremost, the feedback received from the board following our August 16th presentation played a crucial role in informing in our changes. This input served as a valuable guidepost, allowing us to address concerns, refine our approach, and align the plan more closely with the vision and the goals of the board. Budgetary constraints emerged as another influential factor of the revision process. We recognized the potential loss of revenue associated with the half penny sales tax. The revised capital plan had to navigate these financial limitations. This constraint prompted a thorough reassessment of the priorities and strategic reallocation of resources to ensure the continued feasibility and sustainability of the proposed initiatives. Additionally, the revised plan was shaped by a combination of factors, including updated student growth projections, ongoing discussions with our internal capital committee, and refined construction costs that we continue to receive back in construction estimates. By incorporating the new data, our latest data and insights, the revised capital plan now is a dynamic and responsive blueprint reflecting the collective wisdom gained from now is a dynamic and responsive blueprint reflecting the collective wisdom gained from board feedback, fiscal considerations, enrollment projections, internal committee discussions and the current cost assessments. And I'll now turn it over to Dr. Malloy.
Good afternoon. Slide four provides a thorough examination of the 10-year projected enrollment presented to the board on August 16th, 2023. The red trend line spanning from 2003 to 2033 visually underscores the remarkable and anticipated exponential growth within our school district. It's important to clarify that these projections exclusively pertain to the traditional K-12 segment and do not encompass charter students under the school district umbrella. Our current total seat capacity stands at 91,773, a crucial benchmark to consider. Any increase in student population beyond this capacity would necessitate the addition of seats through means such as new schools, additional buildings or temporary portable sites. Although the district has consistently witnessed growth since its inception, it's worth acknowledging that a stabilization or reversal of these trends, trends could impact future projections. To stay ahead of these dynamics, we plan to unveil our updated projections in January 2024, prompting necessary capital adjustments based on a thorough analysis of the forthcoming data. Slide five presents a side-by-side comparison of two charts featuring data from the August 16th capital plan presentation. The chart on the left labeled "No Changes" illustrates a hypothetical scenario with no capital adjustments. In this scenario, if the projected 114,563 students materialize in 2033, the district would face a shortfall of 16,539 seats. Contrasting this, our team's proposal on the right outlines a proactive approach, introducing 17 new school district facilities to effectively accommodate the projected growth. The August 16th new capacity chart not only meets the anticipated growth, but positions the school district positively with an excess of 5,642 seats in 2033. Notably, the dotted red line indicates the renewal date for the half penny sales tax, serving as a critical reference point in the timeline. The capital committee recommends an augmentation in the capacity of our secondary, middle and high schools as an efficient measure to address capacity challenges. Specifically, the proposed increase for middle schools is from 1,200 to 1,800, while for high schools, it is from 2,000 to 2,800. This adjustment aligns with the capacity approaches of similarly, of similarly sized school districts. It's imperative to highlight the critical question of how this expansion may impact student achievement. This consideration should be duly noted for future comparative analysis as we progress. Furthermore, the capital committee would like to emphasize that today's presentation operates within the confines of revenue stream considerations. These constraints have the potential to increase class sizes and could impact learning environments across the district. As we navigate these financial parameters, it is essential to remain mindful of their potential effects on the educational experience of our students. Slide seven serves as an introduction to the specifics of our proposed capital approach by comparing the seats and estimated costs recommended on August 16th with the current recommendations. The initial proposal featured 28,380 seats at a cost of $2.1 billion, aiming to establish 17 new school district facilities to address student growth and strategically position the school district positively in terms of capacity. Today, we are adjusting the capital proposal to include 17,780 seats at a cost of 1.4 billion, resulting in the creation of 12 new school district facilities. This modification reflects a reduction of over 10,000 student seats. The subsequent slides will delve into the projects that were either cut or tabled by the capital committee, providing insights into their geographical locations and their placement within the 10-year timeline. The following three slides showcase the new school construction and expansion projects that were initially presented on August 16th in response to the highlighted K-12 student growth. The information is organized by zone, school name, seats provided, estimated year and estimated cost. Notably, projects highlighted in red indicate those that have been removed from the capital plan. The bold red line on this slide signifies the expiration and upcoming renewal date of the half penny sales tax. It's essential to note that the only school project removed on this slide, which again covers new capital schools up to 2028, is the East Technical College. As a reminder, this project was originally planned to be funded halfway by the school district and the remaining portion by the community. The subsequent slides will, will provide further insights into the specific projects that have undergone capital adjustments or have been removed. This is the second half of the August new construction expansion capital plan, and as you can see in the slide, starting with West Middle SS in 2029, there have been significant projects cut to meet budget constraints. While the removal of the high school expansion in Estero can potentially be justified with current and adjusted student growth projections, the rest of the highlighted cuts will have a detrimental impact on capacity and capital plan seat generation. Slide 11 initiates the presentation of our proposed 10-year capital plan, outlining new construction and expansion projects. The comprehensive list includes a total of 12 projects, incorporating an expansion at Bay Shore Elementary. The three-slide breakdown commences with a renovation of Benita Springs Elementary and progresses systematically through all zones, indicating the estimated year of completion for each project. It's worth noting that certain new school projects are already advancing through the phase design process, such as Middle OO, while others like Elementary L and M are currently progressing through the RFQ process. This distinction is crucial considering both the time constraints and the projected seat requirements. The proposed list encompasses two projects in the South Zone, four new school construction projects in the West Zone and eight schools in the East Zone. This is a strategic distribution that aims to address the specific needs and growth patterns within each zone effectively. The singular addition to the capital plan involves a building expansion at Bay Shore Elementary, strategically paving the way for its phase transition to a K-8 facility. Noteworthy in the proposed capital plan is the removal of certain schools towards the conclusion of the 10-year timeline. This decision is rooted in considerations of available funding for new school projects and the heightened accuracy of student projections in the initial five years. In total, the projected cost for new construction and expansions is over 1.4 billion dollars. The implementation of these proposed schools across the 10-year span will contribute over 17,000 additional seats to the school district, aligning with our strategic objectives to address both immediate and long-term capacity needs. This repetition serves to underscore the comparison between the two capital plans, emphasizing the contrasting figures for the number of seats and associated costs in each. The August 16th presentation primarily emphasized the imperative for additional seats and facilities to strategically accommodate and sustain student growth. In contrast, today's presentation reflects a more pragmatic consideration of the financial constraints within the specified timeframe, the practical options available to us, aiming to operate optimally within the designated financial avenues. The objective is to create the most conducive and effective learning environments for all our students, acknowledging the realities of our limitations. Slide 15 provides a clear side-by-side comparison of two charts, one from the August 16th presentation and the other detailing the proposed capital plan presented today. The chart on the left labeled "August 16th New Capacity" outlines a scenario with 17 new school facilities and the addition of 28,380 student seats. In this hypothetical scenario, if the projected 114,563 students materialize, the district would have an excess of 5,642 seats. In contrast, the new capital plan proposal featuring 12 new school district facilities would offer 17,780 student seats. That is 4,458 seats short of the 114,563 projected students in 2033. This prompts the critical question, what does this mean if both projections hold true and this specific plan is implemented? It indicates a potential capacity stress marked by the presence of portables and increased class sizes. However, there are positive and optimistic aspects to consider. On the positive side, we propose to spend less money for fewer educational facilities. The optimistic perspective is that perhaps we might witness a halt in our growth trajectory. Slide 16 illustrates the decrease in property purchases. The reduction in new school projects is directly linked to the diminished need for properties. Recognizing that land is a limited resource, essential for schools not only within the 10-year timeframe, but also considering the discussed fiscal constraints, we deemed it appropriate to make adjustments to the property budget. At this point, I would like to pass the floor back to Mr. Ross, Executive Director of Operational Planning and Project Management.
So looking at slide 17, this table highlights the top 15 schools as indicated by the district's facility assessment tool. This tool evaluates district facilities based on needs and on their major building system functions. So each of the top five schools based on facility needs have a major rebuild or a major renovation project ongoing or scheduled as part of this capital plan. In addition, the 10 remaining schools have maintenance rotation or modernization projects scheduled over the course of the 10-year plan. And you hear me use the maintenance rotation or modernization projects, and just wanted to be clear, these are not nice-to-have projects. These are significant preventative maintenance and replacement projects that, like I said before, address those major building system needs and functions to maintain and extend the useful life of the facility, including HVAC, roofing, electrical, lighting, safety and other building improvement projects. So with this that you, on this table, you see in terms of the modernization and those maintenance rotation projects, $30 million worth of projects were removed from just these 15 schools as part of the reduction to meet the budgetary constraints. Now we see all the total maintenance rotation projects for all facilities by category for this 10-year period. Again, these projects address the major, major building systems and extend the useful life of the facility. Our commitment and focus on our existing facilities within the capital plan is shown here by our 1.25 billion in planned projects. There were a reduction of approximately 200 million in maintenance rotation and modernization projects from our previous plan from August 16th. These reductions were accomplished by expanding rotation cycles and eliminating some planned projects. These, eliminating these projects, they do increase the risk of critical failures and may increase our operational, operating cost. And I'll turn it, for the finance portion, turn it over to Dr. Desmore.
Thank you. So in financial summary, what we've discussed here is a capital plan that we started out with that based on our estimated revenues and the expenditures in the plan was out of balance by about 1.9 billion dollars. And so we needed to determine how we were going to rectify that. So Mr. Malloy and Mr. Ross just laid out how we reduced about $900 million out of the plan with new construction, the, the facilities or the new schools and, and expansions that went from 17 to 12 for a reduction of almost 700 million. You heard that we reduced the amount of property that we had planned on buying in the future, reduced that to the amount of 10.4 million, and then also proposed maintenance in all of our existing facilities, reduced that about 200 million for a total of almost 900 million that was reduced in the plan that you are being presented now. But I'd said that the plan was out by about 1.9 billion. And so when we are determining how we will balance a plan, then there's a couple of options that you have, either to reduce expenditure or to try to increase your amount of revenue and/or a combination of both. And in this particular scenario, we took a combination of both because the capital plan that you have front, in front of you is also contemplating taking on an additional debt, right, or additional revenue in the form of debt for about a billion dollars over that 10-year time span. Now, that additional proposed debt, just to put it into perspective, because a billion is a large number, so that proposed debt more than doubles the current principal that we have outstanding. And at some points in the plan, based on the estimates, we will be using up to 58% of the capital property tax millage, or what you know of as the 1.5 mil for debt service, right? And that would be in addition to some other revenue sources that we're using for debt service as well, such as impact fee, right? And so just to give you some perspective on that, currently, as I said, we have debt outstanding of $443 million, right, just the principal. We had planned, or at least as the current capital plan was structured, at the end of, or at 2029, we had planned on having about $182.7 million of principal outstanding because we were paying down aggressively and then those monies that we borrowed with those facilities that we were building on sales tax, that was short funded, right? It was to be paid back within the timeframe of the sales tax plan. However, at that time, then, this additional debt then will come to close to 10 times that, from 182 million now to a billion, that would be outstanding over the course of the 10 years as we borrow to fund the new, the, the new initiatives that we have in the plan and the new buildings that we need to be, that need to be built, anticipating the current revenue that we have projected in the plan. So the recommendations summarize, right, to, in order to come into balance with everything that is in the capital plan is, number one, to increase the school size at the secondary level, as Mr. Malloy talked about earlier. Increasing school size then, of course, reduces the number of facilities that we would have to build. And therefore, second recommendation, reducing the number of new buildings, not only by increasing that school size at secondary, but also by just de, reducing the number from 17 to 12. And again, that means that we will be short between the capacities that we have and the projected students that we anticipate. So, and then decreasing the maintenance expenditures, and we did that by several things. We extended rotation cycles. We eliminated some of the planned enhancements at some of the buildings, and that does increase the risk of critical failures and it could, of course, increase operational cost, but there are some choices that need to be made based on the current revenue that we have projected in the plan. Increasing debt, as we just described, to provide more funds into the plan. And then also, the last recommendation would be to continue to explore additional revenue streams. As we talked about earlier, the capital plan, as is currently structured in the 10-year plan, does anticipate the, the loss of, or the expiration of the sales tax in 2028, and it does not anticipate any other additional funding sources beyond the ones that we currently have. But we need to explore those additional revenue streams because the need, I believe, is clearly laid out here within the plan. So all those recommendations being noted, then I believe I'll turn that, this conversation back over to Dr. Bernier for superintendent's comments and the board.
So thank you, team. And there's an immense amount of work that goes on to get us to this point, and I provide to all of you, it's still not a great picture. We are, we are definitely looking at some critical decisions moving forward. Dr. Malloy, if I may, in order to ensure that I stay on track, if you could go to slide 15. Slide 15 provides us sort of what we proposed back in August, which we knew we could not afford by the time we were bringing it to you, and you told us we couldn't afford it either. December 5th new capacity does provide us with the dotted line of where the residuals will, from the sales tax would run out. I want to, I want to take a moment just to point out the dotted line. And it's important to know what that signifies. The sales tax, if not renewed, runs out in 2028. But in talking with Dr. Desmore, we're aware that there will still be residual dollars because it's a trailing fund. There's always additional money coming in even after a year is over. So we will still have some money that residually left over and residual funding coming to take us through 2029. So that's why that dotted line is placed there. If you look at that, that means with what we build in 2029, we're in pretty good shape by 2030. So I'm going to try to do my best to translate Malloy language. He speaks in beautiful terms that I wish I had. But what he's saying is that's a pretty critical point where we still don't know anything projected beyond 2030 and even up to 2030 still is a little bit, the further you get away from next year, there's an increased level of risk of what actually will transpire. Will the economy continue to boom? Will families still continue to move to Southwest Florida? Will housing costs be appropriate to attract families and other individuals who, who will create this enrollment? Demographics currently says yes. currently says yes. But, you know, when you start to get out to 2030, it starts to be less accurate as any prediction would be. If you could go to the summary slide, the last slide before you turn it over to me, I think, I know number one's a concern for board members. But we did this specifically, not ignoring your request, but looking at what that meant for what we could get done. Yes, we can adjust the numbers of 1,800 and 2,800. We can adjust those numbers. It will mean less seats. Adam keeps talking about 17,000 seats. If we adjust those numbers, we will not have 17,000 seats, and it will impact those number, that graph that we just left. We are reducing the number of new buildings. We are continuing to look at what we have to do with all of those school buildings that are getting older. In the presentation today from ISOC, you saw the number of school buildings 40 years and older. We have to continue to do due diligence for those students as well so that they can be provided increased opportunity and that their school building reflects a 21st century learning environment. Dr. Desmore and I have lost, both lost sleep over the restructuring and the increase of debt. She has worked very closely, and I would hope that we would explore today some conversation around what our financial advisors have told us regarding Dr. Desmore's last slides. And then ultimately, 2028, that's why the dotted lines are there. We want the community to be aware that we can keep going, but there's going to come a point without the renewal of a sales or some additional exploration to additional state funding. Additional funding and revenue streams doesn't necessarily mean going out for taxes. It does not mean that. It does mean that we might have to look at PICO funding and some other things that have been demonstrated. And last but not least, I think it's really important under number five, that we say it out loud and make the commitment to the individuals we need to make the commitment to via state law. Any type of additional revenue, including the renewal of the sales tax, under current legislation, must be shared with charters. So charter schools will have the, so it won't be our building fund anymore. It will be our building fund with the larger, with the larger group. So if we can go to the last slide, I set that up in a way and manner by which to have some of the critical discussion that we need to hear so that we can maximize our time between now and January. Because I do believe with a new superintendent coming on board in November, this is an important project list to put some guardrails on to the left or to the right. One, to prevent staff, while a capital plan is a living document, it should change. If a lightning strike occurs in Cape Coral and one of our school buildings burns down while no children are present, we're going to have to address that. If another hurricane comes, we're going to have to address that. So it is a living document, but it shouldn't be able to be changed either by staff changing it alone or an individual board member changing it alone. It must be done by the board, by the staff bringing a recommendation for why the change needs to occur, or a board member bringing a reason for either a project to move up or for a change in the plan. It really has to be the seven individuals who occupy these seats. It has to be their decision as to how we move forward. Once it's outlined, then it's up to the superintendent and staff to execute your plan. So thank you for the additional time to lead into your discussion.
Board members, do you have any comments? Discussions, questions? Mr. Fisher?
I guess I'll start. And thank you, everyone, for that presentation. And I have a couple questions, comments. I'm kind of curious what my other board members think. So high school size was obviously one and middle school size that Dr. Bernier just addressed. So high school, I'm on board, at least me, having experienced a larger high school with the size. Middle is a little bit where I'm having some angst in regards to that. Obviously, it saves us money making it larger. So I get that point. I kind of wanted to hear everyone else's point on that. But I'm wondering how that plays. And again, I don't know exactly where on the maps some of these are going to be, but how that could play the other way into maybe looking at, as we're doing with Hector Cafarettas and K8s, maybe going the other way. And I wanted to see what board thought about that. So that was one thing I was kind of thinking of, and, you know, maybe, you know, combo elementary and middle and spread out the population that way and kind of go to more the neighborhood school concept. Second one I had was actually kind of based on a discussion I had with a board member last week in Duval County. So one of the things, Duval County is obviously a very large county. I want to say they said their student population, forgive me, I think was around 95,000 students, and it was dropping. And one of the issues it was dropping was the increase of charter schools, increase in private schools. So I'd kind of like to see if we could find out some more information, not necessarily here, but, and again, it's not going to be apples to apples, but some of the other school districts because I'm expecting between HB1 and some of the other things that we will see growth and fill-in from charter schools, private schools, those, that things, and how that will impact. Again, I know it's not apples to apples ones, so that's another one. I'd like to see if we could kind of get some feedback on. So, and the other thing is just for renovations, that's another one that, you know, new growth is obviously on the top of our list, but, and I know Mr. Ross, you had mentioned about in regards to renovations, that's a concern of mine now, especially, you know, and I know HVAC came up, but I know a lot of the schools, we've had some issues with that, and I'm really hoping can make sure to keep up with our current schools on that. So that's my thoughts at the moment. Thank you.
Other board member comments? Member Giavennelli?
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. I actually, K8s were on my radar. I thought that, I was thinking that, you know, is there opportunity for us to have, look at some of our schools besides like Bay Shore and seeing what we can change, you know, what has the ability and to change up to K8s to help, you know, spread out the attendance in our schools and our students. We know that Fort Myers Academy of the Arts is doing very well, and I think we have another K8 that we're looking at, the Innovative School. That one, and the numbers aren't bad. So I think is large, you know, not a large school. So that was one of the questions that I was going to ask the superintendent to look more into that, what we could, what we could convert to K8s, and as well as what's the impact of charter schools. I know that Optimum, I think it is, they're planning on building like several new schools in Lee County that, that I believe will affect our numbers as well. Other than that, I mean, you really hit it, but I just wanted to reiterate what you said because I agree with you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think, I think we have some answers to some of these questions. So as we look at demographic enrollment, K8s were examined, and specific questions were asked by me as well, there are other members of cabinet, as well as on the capital committee as to where that, how that impacted us. I'll paraphrase by saying, K8s don't help. We really need more middle school capacity for middle school students. By adding on to a Bay Shore, yes, it helps a small elementary school hold on to some of their kids and provides us another option in a particular zone map. I mean, it's a good thing to put into the plan. But K8s don't really grow enough of the middle school population in the areas that we need it. You have to be thinking, and I'll defer to Dr. Malloy, he's going to do a much better job with this than I am, but you have to be thinking about where this growth is occurring. And for instance, adding an elementary to Lamb's or adding a 678 to a Montessor just isn't feasible. We don't have the property, we don't have the ability, we don't have the other infrastructures that are required by a K8, specifically gymnasiums and other things that are required in a build. But I'm conflating the issue by getting too detailed. Dr. Malloy?
And really not our position to comment on the school environment of a K8, but really just the seat capacity. So if you look at what we have in terms of prototypes, 1,000 at elementary, and then what we're proposing, 1,800 at middle school. If you look at our prototype for a K8, it's 16. So it really just doesn't get us either the elementary or the middle school seats that we would need. And while it may be a great learning environment, from a seat side, it just doesn't provide the necessary capacity for our, for our students.
Mr. Fisher?
Just wanted to jump in one more thing. And I appreciate Dr. Bernier. I was talking more from ground up, K through 8s. So as we-
And that's what Dr. Malloy is saying. That's a great point, Mr. Fisher. When you look at the numbers by building a K8 at 1,600 and really needing 1,000 seats for elementary and then another 1,800 for, for middle school, a school building of 1,600 just doesn't, doesn't get us there. Now, there are going to be opportunities where a K8 build is going to be really appropriate. And I do believe it's a model that we should continue to look at. But right now, it just doesn't, I mean, we've done the numbers with K8s involved, and it just doesn't get us to 2030 in a spot where you're, or whoever's sitting here, is going to be happy with the size of our school buildings, and most importantly, the size of our classrooms and the number of portables we're going to need if we don't, if we don't move forward. Is there some work to do potentially in the middle school area? I worked very closely with the deputy superintendent and academic services to help justify the 2,800. That is a pretty close proximity to what our other larger school districts that we compare each other so often to are building and what their capacities look like. I will tell you that generally, the recommendation for middle schools and what we can determine from those same sites and same counties is they, they average about 1,552. Just because we build it for 1,800 potentially doesn't mean we necessarily have to fill it with 1,800, but it would be nice to have that capacity moving forward if we needed it over a period of time, if the gap widens between the enrollment line and the other. I'm going to take on the charter school and private school issue. Right now, we are not seeing the same influx in Duval County. I also had a conversation with a board member in Duval. She's, because I was asking her about their declining enrollment. And across the state, we are an anomaly. We continue to grow while the rest of the state is dealing with either flat growth or a depletion in their student population. Why we're such an anomaly, I can't really explain that yet, but it is a fact. Therefore, when it, but we're not losing, currently losing kids to HB1. We've had this discussion privately, one-on-one, so I'll have it with the board, with the board publicly now and others. What we really could utilize from the state is better information related to how many students have taken an HB1 opportunity. We are not getting the same level of detail that we've received in the past, and it's hard for us to know how many have taken it. But we can share with you that no matter how many have taken it, we continue to grow. So we're still in a growth positive format. The other part to charters is, charters apply on an application basis. And they don't usually tell you, but we could certainly ask our charter office to reach out to some of our current operators, as well as some of the bigger management companies in the state, to see if they have plans within Lee County over the next five to seven years. Again, they apply on an annual basis. They're approved, their applications are vetted by our team, they're approved by you. And then, again, they are not choosing to build 1,000, 1,800, or 2,800-seat environments. I find them, and rightfully so. They have a, they have a different business model. They have more of a boutique, more of a clear curriculum focus around very specific areas, and they keep their student bodies within their financial models. So, but yes, we can look into that, but that'll be hard to predict how many charter schools will come to Lee County over the next 10 years. But we can certainly reach out and try to see what some of our larger providers currently within our, meaning the people currently within our county are thinking, as well as some of the larger providers, there are the management companies that build and build consistently.
Ms. Patricca?
Thank you. I have a bunch, so you can stop me and then come back to me. So Slide four, please. Mr. Fisher and Dr. Bernier have already addressed this. We have not seen a lot of use of the vouchers this year, but it takes these individual private schools some time to get up and running. So I expect that we will see more of it. I'm seeing the opening of like mom and pop type stores, type stores, type schools in storefronts that are advertising out there. So I expect to see an increase in that. I'm wondering if there's any kind of a factor that we can use to, when we're looking at our demographics and growth that we expect, if there's some kind of factor we can put into that equation. Slide six. Very, very concerned about the increased capacity, both at the high school and the middle school level. I know, Dr. Bernier, that you've already addressed this. I'm not worried about the prototypes. I'm worried about the human relationships inside those buildings, the impact. I may have said this at the table before, two of my boys are seniors this year. Both of them wanted to go to back-to-school night. Why do 17 and 18-year-old kids want to go back to back-to-school night? Because they want to see their principal. And if we get to 2,800 kids, how many of those kids are going to know their principal? And I believe that those human relationships have a significant impact on educational outcomes. So while we might be able to accommodate kids, are we really doing what we're supposed to be doing, which is providing a world-class education system? That, I've stated my concern. Slide 11. I love the prioritization of Benita Springs Elementary School. Thank you. I believe that that community deserves an educational facility in which they can take pride, students, parents, and staff alike. Slide 13. Bay Shore Elementary K8, population needs to justify the expansion by 300 seats. That's a question, if I may, through the chair to the superintendent. I don't need it today. And I'm sure you've given it to this board before. I just can't remember the map that shows me all the dots around Bay Shore that justify an expansion by 300 seats.
I will make sure that you are provided that information regarding the map. It really has to do with that particular middle school proximity zone and having only one middle school choice without sending children significant distances either north or south of the river.
Okay, then, question answered. Thank you. Slide 19. Cutting back on maintenance is the thing in this plan that I object to the most. It is so much more expensive to cut back on maintenance. I'd rather see portables. I'd rather see kids sitting in cafeterias than I would see cutting back on maintenance. Primary reason we went out for that half penny sales tax was to be more efficient and make sure that we were taking care of problems before they occurred. It is just so much more expensive to replace a system that has failed catastrophically than it is to maintain that system during its lifespan and perhaps beyond its lifespan because of proper maintenance. And finally, slide 20. I'm a little confused. I'm sorry. I have to say I'm a little confused. If I may, through the chair to Dr. Desmore's, are we still under the constraint of when we build a school, we have to take out cops for that school in order to build the school above the state required amount that they allow us?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the, now the state requirement, the cost per student station, basically, it is, I want to say suspended, if I'm using the right term, for a short period of time, but that contract has to be in place by a certain date.
Okay.
And I don't want to say the wrong date, so I'm not, so that particular requirement is suspended.
Okay, so any school we build from now until whenever that date is gone, we could build with cash from the half penny sales tax?
Well, could build, yes. But based on the plan that we had, our, short answer, yes. But long answer is based on the plan that we had put in place, all of the ones that are already like under construction, either previously just finished or in contract, we had already kind of made the financial plan for what the longer term was going to be.
Right. Okay, so I, I don't, I don't know if maybe we should consider either adding that to our, it's probably too late, legislative platform for this year, or making sure it's included in next year. Because not being able to build with money that comes in from the half penny sales tax and having to take out cops to build those buildings costs us millions of dollars in interest that we don't have to pay. And that was a change that was made shortly after we passed the half penny sales tax here in Lee County. And the banker that wrote the bill sat in our room while we were briefed on it and the necessity of it. It's essentially just giving money to the banks. It doesn't benefit our children or our community in any way. So I'd like us to think about that going forward. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Mrs. Morgan?
Okay, just some nitpicking things first. High school NNN is listed as having 2,000 seats versus 2,800. When you do Cypress Lake Middle School, do you plan to expand the number of seats?
Ms. Morgan, both of those projects are already underway. That's why those numbers reflect what we asked when- That's why those numbers reflect what we asked when we put it out for ITN and when we bid. I asked the same question in Cabinet multiple times, and Mr. Ross finally told me enough times that I, I don't ask the same question anymore. But it is confusing, and that's important for the public to be drawn out. Dr. Malloy, if you could get us to that slide. I want to make sure that Ms. Morgan's point is well-made for not only all of us, but for the group. She's looking at the Cypress Lake rebuild, and it just says rebuild number of seats. That number of seats would be closer to middle school OO at 1,200, because that's what we projected the building, when we put it out for bid for the rebuild. OO has already gone into Phase 1, so there's a contractor already on board expecting to build OO at 1,200 students. NNN already in Phase 1, and I'm not doing this for you, I'm, I'm making sure the public understands that while we may be considering larger prototypes moving forward, those ones already under contract are being built for the sizes that we originally contracted them for.
Thank you. So I also want to make a comment about school size. While I am concerned, when the question was originally asked months ago, I went and looked at sort of the, the school grades for the high schools with populations at 2,800 or above, and essentially, what you find when you compare them to our high schools, there's really no difference in achievement levels. So, I mean, that's a very, 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 you know, high level, really doesn't tell you a lot, other than there seems to be no penalty from an achievement point of view when you go above the 2,000 number that we have now. And I, but I apologize, I, I, the, the numbers are at home somewhere, this has come up very quickly, I forgot to pull them out, but I will do that for you. And, and also, I have to say that with respect to more students, how you structure your staff matters. So you can have two principals, or you can ha, you can split your school in half. From a, there are multiple ways to create a more personal learning environment. It doesn't have to be about the building. The staff matters, and how the staff is aligned, and how the students are aggregated matters. I am curious about the Innovation K-8 being 1,260 versus the 1,620 projected for the other K-8s. I mean, that's a significant loss of seats in that school. Now, I understand that that school is, is planned to be a, a special school with all kinds of special accommodations, but I think, again, that has an impact on our cost per student seat. I also want to ask about Bay Shore. 300 seats for $50 million, that's $160,000 per student seat. I share Ms. Patrica's concern, uh, what was it she said? Because I wrote it down, Ms. Patrica's concern. Oh, the, I was on this board in 1213 when we had to kill our maintenance cycle. When we had been on a regular maintenance cycle, and every, and, and every year, we had to cut it back, and that's why we ended up where we are. So, just saying, I've been there, I've seen the impact of doing that. I do have, oh, charter enrollment. The average charter enrollment's about 800 seats, and nobody's building charters for high schools because of the, the size of the property required. So I think while it's a concern, just the, the land requirements for building a private or charter high school for doing anything other than an elementary, middle, or even an elementary or K-8, are, there are challenges to expanding those kinds of programs in Lee I was going to make a comment, Dr. Decemore, and, and colleagues, do we know if that per-student station limitation is one of the things on the legislature's, hm?
Dreg?
Dreg list? I can't remember. I thought, does anybody, nobody knows? Okay.
I don't recall.
Okay, I think that, that is an open question, and, and this is just an editorial political comment at this point, but we are talking about push, the legislature is forcing us to push our taxpayer dollars to schools that the district doesn't own. So it's an asset the district doesn't own. How do you justify that? How do you justify that? Because if that school closes, we don't get the money back, and I think we need to be having conversations with our delegation about the impact of doing these things. I think people in the community need to understand that we are turning their taxpayer dollars over to private corporations, and we have no ability to claw that asset back. So that's just my closing editorial comment. Yes, there are a lot of issues. I want to thank staff. There's an enormous amount of work that's been done here. I am very concerned, but I really, really, really appreciate the work that you've done to put sort of markers on size, markers on time, so that we can have productive conversations at this table. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Yes, he's, oh, he's looking. Dr. Bernier.
Well, I just want, I don't want to hold up the other board members if I'm out of order, Matt, and Chair, please. I mean, I just want, I, I think it's important to get some of those answers.
Okay.
In order to, to help other board members who may have additional questions, it'll also spark another round. This is, this is a heavy lift today. If you would like, board members, I'm taking copious notes, I just fear forgetting, but I'm, I'm writing as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Persson, you're next.
First, I think you're absolutely right on the charter schools not doing high schools. But what that means is these kids that are leaving in elementary and middle school will be coming back
Yes.
to our high schools, because they're not like going to just drop out.
Right.
And, and that's happened in the past. That's not something we're just seeing is going to happen. So that, that scares me a little bit. Could end up being the same numbers, less elementary, less middle, and more high. I mean, it's just, so we don't know. As someone says, you don't know what you don't know.
Uh, I had some questions on the Bay Shore price tag. I know we have to build a gymnasium, and my understanding is they have enough seats for 200 kids. So the $50 million is for 100 seats, plus a gymnasium, plus maybe a science lab or something? I'm not, I'm not sure, and I'm not saying it's wrong, I just, it just seemed high to me.
$50 million, it's, it's, it's been board member question across the board, I will defer, but $50 million is just that. It's the additional seated seating. It is also because we're attaching to Bay Shore, Bay Shore Code. When you attach a building to an existing building, there are now code requirements in the existing building that have to be addressed, and then on top of it is not only the gymnasium eventually, but the other music situations for band art, meaning physical art, and chorus, so that they have the appropriate space for their own electives, because while music is offered at the elementary, those teachers have a full load of teaching elementary school students music. They have to have additional teachers to teach those other electives, and therefore need the programmatic space that Bay Shore doesn't have. It's not just as simple as moving fifth graders to sixth, to eighth grade. There, there's other curriculum concerns, and, and again, I, I want to stress to the community, these are estimated costs. The board has an excellent process in place where we do Phase 1 with any build to get to a guaranteed maximum price. So these are our best assumptions.
Thank you for that explanation. I know the public would, is going to be looking at that and wondering.
Any other board comments or questions? Ms. Patrica.
Just super quickly, I, I rapid-fired, slide six, slide four, slide 11, without properly thanking you. I mean, I know that, like, I, I gave you a list of complets, these are the things I don't like, but there were an awful lot of words and numbers on the page that I didn't mention, so that means those are the things I did like. So thank you very much for your efforts. I really, this is as, as difficult as some of it, some of it is to embrace, and there's an awful lot that's good here. So I just want you to know you're appreciated. Thank you.
And Ms. Morgan.
My apologies. I forgot to make a comment about the Technical College. That is a huge disappointment to me. I would like to understand a little bit better where that recommendation comes from. I assume there is some understanding that you all have that I'm not privy to at this point. Thank you.
I, I can, I'm just trying, so I can certainly take that one on. If you, and I suspected that also at one of the slides, you would wonder why there were a zero number of seats next to the Technical College, but if you look at the top of that column, it says K-12 seats. Right now, the focus of the Capitol Committee and the work being done by the individuals seated at the podium, myself and individuals seated in the audience who are not in the room today, a, a Technical College on the east side of town is incredibly important to this community. And I don't mean important from the aspect of it would be nice to have. I mean important from the aspect, it's almost a must. We have legislative proposals in part of our platform to look at building an annex. That would be the place to start. But when you look at the number of K-12 seats we need and the demand for K-12 seats versus the demand currently, I, I know if you build it, they will come, but if the demand currently for the Technical College and the significant gap in funding, as this idea, as, as it was explained to me, because this idea came to fruition before myself and many other members of the board were on the board, the idea that we would come up with half the money and there would be fundraising that went on to build the rest, I don't know that the board ever gave clear enough direction as to, I know who you would direct to do the fundraising, I'm, I'm very well aware of who would get that direction, but I don't believe the board at the time gave that direction. And quite honestly, Technical Colleges usually come from a large state appropriation. And I think your platform over the last two years has begun to establish the need, and I do believe, going back to the idea of this being a, a living document, this is one of those things that if the state looked at the amazing work that our Technical Colleges are doing, we, I, I can't repeat this enough, we're number two in the state in all of our technical completions. If people join our programs, they graduate with a skill set and a job. So as we continue to tell that positive story of the great work going on, we, we will find a funding avenue. Again, living document, when, if those fun, if those funds materialize, then we would bring the Technical College back to the plan as a recommendation to bring it back, and then the board would make the decision as to where it would be placed, either based upon that funding, the funding source, a piece of legislation that says it has to be built by a certain date, you know, again, there, there are things here. So I just, that's a short answer unless my team has any additional feedback for the board.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. Mrs. Jordan, you had your hand up?
Oh, I did, thank you. It's regard the Bay Shore. So, in four years, so this is going down four years for 300, how much money are we spending in the four years to bus those kids across the river? So if we were to start with sixth grades staying, I mean, I just think that without worrying, that we're looking at this 50,000, you know, the, the amount of money, but if we can do this progressively and move them in there and stop all the busing, how much money are we saving? Do we look at all of that when we're, and I'm sure you have, I'm just, but I'm just asking that question? Are we looking at all of that?
Yeah, it's not just about cost savings at Bay Shore, it's about Benita Springs. Benita Springs brick is old, and we have issues with water intrusion now, unrelated to any of the past events. The brick is just getting old, and, and the recommendation has been, we have one of two options. We can tear it down and rebuild something that is historically pleasing, or we would have to take it down brick by brick and rebuild it. That, that school building, you know, when you look at its index, is, is necessary. Hector, remember Hector potentially is a reimbursement from FEMA in order to replace the building. Cypress was already on the list, and then you start to get into the growth outside in the east, as well as the high school that's necessary in the west community. That being said, right now, the way Bay Shore looks, if it opened in '28, I have to do the math on a piece of paper, that would mean 27, 28, 27, 26. That means in the, the class that would be at Bay Shore in 2025, the way this is currently structured, would be that first group in '26, '27 that would become sixth graders. I think this is important for the Bay Shore community to hear. Then those sixth graders would move up to seventh grade in '27, '28, and then they would fold into their newest building in '28, '28, '29. Part of what we'd like to discuss today is, are there projects that need to move up, down, sideways? So that, that's something that we would hope to get additional information from the board, so that we can come back with a plan that aligns to your expectation. So I'm going to take the opportunity, since it's shown itself, Bay Shore's about additional rooms to answer the questions and the other ancillary supports that have to occur for curriculum locations within a K-8 model. Innovation, remember, the size of the lot that the Innovation School is supposed to be built on is part of the parameters of the size of the school building. That particular piece of property has its own limitations. The Technical College I just addressed, Mr. Persson's is 100% correct. We have a primary level of our charter schools in elementary and middle school, and those students will return to us for high school, and we have to be aware of that, and demographic data takes that movement into consideration. I will tell you, just to go back to a slide, just give me a second, gentlemen, I apologize. It's slide 18. Just so you know, the level of wordsmithing that goes on, the word maintenance had about nine different names, and, and originally, it had modernization, and we were afraid if we came forward with a modernization topic, it would seem like we were adding stuff to schools, and it was just fun stuff to have. There is another source to do some of the maintenance that you are describing, when an air conditioner goes down and it needs a new fan motor. This maintenance rotation, for, for the edification, and I believe the board has explained it well, but for the public, this maintenance rotation is about the entire HVAC system, the squirrel's tired, he's run on the wheel as fast as he can, and we need to, we, we need to put in a, a new air conditioning system, right? It, it's those types of projects. But we feared the term modernization, and the team does believe that we will be able to keep up not only with, with the modernization of our maintenance programs to do an entire electrical upgrade or a brand-new roof, but we will also have the dollars in another pot to do some of the other maintenance work that's necessary when, you know, we get a, when we need to patch a roof, or when we need to replace a blower and an air conditioner, or when we have electrical outlets that need to be replaced. So I don't know, Mr. Ross, if you wanted to weigh in on that anymore, but I just didn't want people to believe that everything with maintenance is tied up just in this category.
And I think our maintenance team, Director Barber sitting on the back, did a great job of trying to identify maybe the lesser impacted type maintenance and modernization projects. So some of the reductions I could speak of, I have some lists, and, you know, paving and ceiling tiles and exterior painting, interior painting, scoreboards, running tracks. So, you know, trying not to impact those major business, um, building systems that protect the building envelope, and I'm looking at some other areas. So definitely was a, a difficult task on identifying where to reduce, but understood the, the assignment and the need to defeat the, to meet the budgetary constraints.
Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. I just want to, to, I am not trying to take anything, anything away from Benita. I understand the necessity for all of those built, but I also have to make sure that I, and I have to say this because I, I hear from, from the people in North Fort Myers constantly, just as we listen to Fort Myers Beach, and today we were, you know, able to open those doors. But I just want to make sure that even when we're saying east, they help east out by putting them in, keeping them in north, that is helping out the east schools as well, because that's where those children are going. So I just needed to, to share that information as well. So thank you very much.
Mr. Persson.
Yeah, and thank you, Ms. Jordan, because I was, you made my brain start doing numbers. We have approximately 100 kids moving up to middle school from Bay Shore. You have 200 kids already in middle school that are still going to be in middle school. Most are going to Okamik. Most are going to Okamik, current sixth graders and seventh graders. So that's 300 possible students that will no longer be going across the river because there's no busing for them, because they're not, that's not in their zone. So they're going to have to either go to North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, or Calusa, or Diplomat. And what, is there enough room for, I say worst case scenario, 300 kids? Are there many open seats in those three schools?
Without trying to project a parent's choice or ranking in that, in that projected zone, it would be extremely challenging to have all of those Bay Shore kids gain entry into North Fort Myers Academy, given their reserved seats and the roll-up that they have at fifth grade, meaning that a large number of Bay Shore kids will be transported far west to Calusa and Diplomat if there is not a roll-up at Bay Shore. Bay Shore is a very unique geographic location, and it's why the need has been discussed and recommended by Capitol.
Okay. I, I'm just worried it could really be a real problem next year, simple as that. So I don't know if there is any way to possibly move it up. I know gymnasium-wise, the church right across the street has a very good working relationship with the school, and they could play some games and things there. They do all the, they already let them do all, a lot of their, you know, what do you want to call it? That's their auditorium is what it works out to be when they have their large assemblies there. So that's a possibility, where still might not build the gymnasium until '28, but maybe we could somehow get it going. I, I just, you know, if we had room for all the kids, I just not sure, even at Diplomat and Calusa, there's enough room to put them all in right now, period. Now, again, I, we don't know what parents' choices are, so that's hard to say. I just want to throw that out there, because Superintendent said maybe some projects should be moved up or back or whatever.
What I, what I'm trying to say to all of you is we have put together our best thinking, but we all serve at the pleasure of the board. And we are open to any decisions that you might want us to consider in terms of the order as you look at slides, while I'll go back to slide 11. You know, as you look at slide 11, and again, the red line is where the half penny sales actually runs out. We believe there will be enough residual dollars to do middle RR and high school QQQ. That being said, and we already are underway with some of the, some of the projects at the top of the list. So from, basically from OOO down through elementary O, we have, we have some options within that range to make some adjustments if that is the board's pleasure. It does potentially put, you know, one board member opposed to another, or, I mean, I, but we have worked really hard on a collegial relationship and, and you work very hard to make sure that your points for your why are well-known. So I appreciate both Ms. Jordan and Mr. Persons for, for weighing in on, weighing in on Bay Shore.
Any other comments? Okay, I will, I have just a few. And that's a great point, Dr. Bernier, is perhaps this moves into our one-on-ones, because we all hear from different constituents throughout the community because of where we live. So what some of us may hear in the south zone, the east zone community isn't even aware of that, and maybe neither is the board member representing that district. But a couple of things, first of all, this is such a huge thing to swallow, so thank you so much, because I'm so glad I didn't have to do this for homework, to put this thing together. You know, I, I try so hard to find the silver lining in what seems to be sometimes dismal experiences, especially when you're looking at a price tag like that, that's so big. So many things have been said that I agree with. I won't talk about maintenance, because I completely agree, that's definitely not something go on the wayside, it's so costly in the end to be able to correct that. When you were talking about large schools, the 2,800 versus the 2,000 we have now, I had written that down while you were speaking about, we just have, perhaps we, in the high school level, we start thinking out of the box when it, regarding administration. And maybe there are two principles, maybe, maybe there is a ninth and 10th grade administration and an 11th and 12th grade administration, and then when they move up, they get new counselors, they get a new AP, and how great is that to be able to get to know all your kids just in a short chunk, in a smaller chunk, rather than trying to get to know 2,800 at a time? So for me, two things keep popping out at me. Never before now is it more important for us, because it's a domino effect, is to, one, because of the growth of our community, is it so important for us to stay laser-focused on teacher retention and teacher recruitment? Because with growing schools, with growing communities, we're going to have to hire, obviously, more staff. And I think that's something that needs to stay at the forefront of our mind, and secondly, or secondly, excuse me, I think it's incredibly important that we really tighten up our procurement, our procurement process, and that we really button up any kind of policies regarding that, because with a budget this large and a need in this community, it is our biggest priority besides safety of children is to take tax dollars and continue to use them fiscally, responsibly, conservatively, when we are out looking for who is going to do, who are we going to go find to build all these beautiful new schools? It's, it's incredibly important that we keep that in the forefront of our mind. But that's really all I had, because so many great conversations were had on the board. I wanted to make sure that I hadn't missed anybody. Yes, Mrs. Patrica?
I just wanted to add to what you were saying at the beginning, and a little bit of what Ms. Jordan and Mr. Persons were saying about hearing from different people in different parts of the community. I think it's important for us to also remember that we represent those who don't have a voice, and those who don't necessarily have the wherewithal, or the ability, or there may be a language barrier that presents, prevents them from coming to this board room and giving comments about, I don't want to be bussed across a bridge. It's important for us to, to remember that we represent the voiceless too, and don't just allow the loud to make all of our decisions. So those are my comments, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
And I would just like to add on to that, that is why, that is our job to be out there in the community and speaking amongst all of those who may not have the opportunity to be in here, so that way we can at least have that information to share and to, to pull out of them. So we can be their voice.
Great points. All right, if that is all, thank you so much to the team for being here and, and working through that giant job. So I appreciate you. It's 3:14, board, we have one more thing on the agenda, is it okay to continue? Okay, great. Moving on to student enrollment plan 2425, Dr. Malloy doesn't have to go far, he's part of this team, Director Planning Growth and Capacity. And then Saretta Ralph, Executive Director of Student Enrollment, will be presenting to us. Is Mrs. Ralph here? Oh, there she is, sorry.
She's going to, she's going to stay in the audience for this one, just in terms of efficiency.
Dr. Malloy, before you begin, if you'd click that small little arrow in the opened box to the right-hand side.
Oh, it's not.
Export PDF. Down right there. Thank you, sir. So I'll kick this off with Dr. Malloy, so as we continue to look at our growth and our ability to build schools, one of the other things we also have been taking on is the work of the student enrollment plan, often known as proximity. Dr. Malloy has been presented some challenges in the recent weeks regarding some particular school buildings, what has been known as a traditional feeder pattern. He has worked, I'm just going to give him credit right up front, he's worked tirelessly, not only in the previous presentation along with the rest of the team, but he and the people he represents have worked very hard to come up with the best possible scenarios for our student enrollment plan for middle school for 2425. So I will turn it over to Dr. Malloy.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. Don't have to do my scripted good afternoon.
You do have to state your name for the record, though.
Adam Malloy, in planning. So I'm here to discuss just a modification to the plan for student enrollment that was pre-briefed on November 21st. During our previous adjustment to middle school zones in Cape Coral, we unintentionally disconnected Pine Island Elementary from its nearest middle school, Trafalgar. Recognizing this oversight, we proposed a solution that Pine Island fifth graders will now transition to Trafalgar Middle School, establishing a feeder pattern for the barrier island. Transportation will be provided for the 60 current Pine Island students at Trafalgar and incoming sixth graders. This adjustment not only restores the connection, but also helps ease transportation challenges on the island at all levels. Families on Pine Island who prefer not to attend, Trafalgar can submit a choice application. I did want to take a moment, besides that modification, to express my gratitude to our internal team. While I'm often up here presenting, it's really this team, specifically the application services and student enrollment departments for their tireless efforts in implementing these changes, the successful development and execution of proximity, such a large-scale system change, really trying to reverse engineer a system that had been in place for roughly 15 to 20 years, depending on how you look on the five-year provisionalary period. So the successful development and execution of proximity wouldn't be possible without the expertise of the individuals working on it in focus, and the enrollment team that collaborates with our families. Despite the occasional challenges mainly presented by me related to boundary or policy adjustments, I do appreciate their dedication, and I believe our system greatly benefits from their hard work. So special thanks to Jose Cuevas, Richard Avilas, Ryan Hambling, Ken Maines, Jonathan Hauser, Amy House, Gonzalo Minacho, Bailey Lewis, Gabriela Alvarez, Victor Orlovic, Saretta Ralph, Anne Johnson, and Sharon Beerley. Apart from the change that was discussed with Pine Island, and this just quick expression of gratitude to the team that's been working daily to make this happen behind the scenes, especially with the condensed timeframe that we're looking at in January with board approval on the 9th, there are no other modifications to the student assignment plan. I'm available to address, as is Ms. Ralph, any further questions related to the plan? Sorry, I could have turned that over better. It seemed like, it seemed like there would have been more.
Any comments, suggestions, questions about the student enrollment plan? Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, and thank you to Dr. Malloy and your team, and especially working through things with Pine Island-Trafalgar area, and thank you as well as Dr. Bernier. I know we've had frequent conversations about that. I know it's not easy, especially in District One of how the, the middle schools were unfortunately planned many, many years ago, so they're very clustered together. So I really appreciate that, looking into things and trying to do what's best for our students. My only concern, I'm going to continue to note for the record, is, which I know it's, it's, it's a, it's a near impossible task of how you have to balance stuff. I do have my concerns, again, about Zone AA displacement, which is over 60%, including challengers, so. But again, I know it's, there's only so many things you can maneuver with how those schools are at. But thank you again, appreciate it.
Do we know how many children that this is going to impact as far as displacement from, do we have that number? Please, and thank you. Bless you. Because I know that Pine Island, again, was speaking about the concerns of, Trafalgar was one, but Mariner Middle was another one that they were concerned about coming off the island.
Correct. We're looking at close to 5,000.
5,000.
Yeah, and keep in mind, just in context with elementary, it was in that 13,000 to 14,000 of the K-5 that were displaced.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments or questions, thank you for your presentation. Next item on the agenda is the agenda review of the December 5, 2023 action meeting. Dr. Bernier, please proceed with the agenda review.
Madam Chair, I did get several questions, beginning with the consent agenda for Business Services, item I-7, approval to remove items from officially property records. There was a question specifically about a high school laptop that was reported stolen, that was reported stolen within our report. The questions all revolve around, was it reported stolen to law enforcement, et cetera? So the short answers to all of this is yes, it was reported to law enforcement. It was actually a vehicle theft, there was an individual who had a laptop in their car. For something to be written off as stolen, there must be a police report filed for the item. This particular item was stolen in a vehicle burglary and was reported to authorities. Police reports were taken, so we have the ability in this case to drop it off as a stolen item.
Ms. Chiavinelli?
Do you have the list? We don't have, we don't.
I do not have a list, ma'am. I just have the list of questions. I know what list you are looking for, I will make sure that it gets provided. The second question revolves around I-9, approval of the agreement with risk management associates. The question revolves around the broker will forego initial broker services fee, but will collect National Flood Insurance Program commissions throughout the year. A reconciliation of the NIFP commissions against the fee amount will be provided at or around each contract year at the end of December 31st. Can you please explain this contract and the scope of work? Who do we have presently doing the scope of work? Who have we had in the past? And was this put out to bid?
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Sir, we don't have the questions, so it's a little hard to follow.
Please, and thank you.
Jen's not here. Email is wonderful.
Madam Chair, do you want me to stop, or do you want me to continue to provide answers to the questions, or just email them?
Board, do you want him to continue, or do you want us to wait for a printed copy of the?
We don't need it printed.
Or an email of the questions, list of questions? Mr. Fisher?
I'd prefer at least if they can be emailed right now, if we can take a moment for that.
All right. While they're working on it, we'll take a four-minute recess. While they're working on it, we'll take a four-minute recess. Thank you.
Depends on their questions.
Dr. Bernier, will you please proceed?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for calling us back to order. I'm just going to recap. The first item was I-7, about the removal of a stolen item from official property records. Yes, this incident was reported to law enforcement. There was a written police report. The question is, "The broker will forego initial broker services invoice, but will collect NIFP or National Flood Insurance Program commissions throughout the year. A reconciliation year contract. Can you please explain the contract and scope of work? Who do we presently have doing the scope of work? Who has it been in the past? And was this put out to bid?" This was not necessarily needed to be put out to bid, so it was not this year. This is our contract with our insurance broker, Risk Management and Associates. It probably is better known to the board as Brown &amp; Brown. We've been using them. This is the broker who essentially helps us produce and procure the underwriters for the district's various insurance policies. As you're aware from our Hurricane FEMA...Hurricane Ian updates related to FEMA, we have what's referred to as a quilt or a patchwork of insurances. Not any one individual insures us for everything. There are small policies throughout our entire network, and it is normal that those individuals would receive their commissions from those individuals that do the work of insuring us. Consent for Operations, L-1, Approval of Phase 1 Preconstruction Budget Estimate for Cypress Lake Middle School HVAC Renovation, Central Energy Plant, RFQs CQ230098DO, CQ23097A as in Apple and as in Nancy, and CQ2300...sorry, 0096DB. Can you provide all building official services for the renovation of the HVAC systems? Explain how this will work for three schools, especially since we're demolishing the middle school. Please advise which three schools exactly. How does this contract work with one of the schools being demolished, the middle school, and the other two? Can we have one contract for three schools? Help me to understand. These three school buildings impacted are Cypress Lake High School, the Cypress Lake, what's referred to as the Cypress Lake Performing Arts Academy, and Cypress Lake Middle. They all get served off the same central chiller plant. So those are the...really, it's two sites, Cypress Lake High School and Cypress Lake Middle School. The building will permit the CE plant and the high school HVAC systems to be worked on at the same time. When the middle school is rebuilt, the building official will review a new contract to permit and inspect that portion of the project. We do not want to have any crossover contracts, as it can delay the project closeout and final payments. Notice that the firm, NV5, had won the RFQ process for the high school HVAC project, and GFA won the RFQ process for the middle school project. The Central Energy Plant will service Cypress Lake High, Cypress Lake Center for the Arts, and in the future Cypress Lake Middle, when it's ready to be tied to the CEP plant. So the work will go on. They'll ensure that air conditioning is available to all sites. Specifically, they can take down some of the section because a chiller plant...I'm not going to try to explain air conditioning. The chiller plant is large enough to support a couple of the schools while they repair part of it for the middle school portion, and then they can finish the project. So there's a staged replacement, so that at any time, provided things go correctly, that any time, not any one of the school buildings will be without central air.
So I would just go by the contract. It said three schools, and that was a little, you know, I knew there was not three schools there, but are they talking maybe about the arts? That other building that's separate, maybe?
I believe, and I am not 100% on this, but there are, in their mind, there are three separate schools that are impacted by working on the chiller plant. It is Cypress Lake High, Cypress Lake Center for the Arts, which we see as a board and a community as one school, and then Cypress Lake Middle. But specifically, they identified all three sites.
I see. Got it. So it makes sense now, because I just want to get a little clarification on it, and thank you for explaining the Central Energy Plant. I think that's important, that it's going to maintain both schools and keep them AC. Thank you.
We have several of those throughout the school district. The last question was L-7, Approval of Expenditure for ITN, N as in Nancy, 227426, D as in dog, B as in boy, Planning Consulting Services. Was this paid in the first year? In the initial year of the contract, there were no expenses incurred. The allocation for Holes Montess was made during a period of uncertain staffing at the time during planning, and the belief that long-term projects would require third-party support. Subsequently, as we've now staffed the planning division with a new director, the director and this process has been resolved to have employees actually doing our planning work. We're now...we've now completed a project needs assessment for which Holes Montess could support. So there was an original opportunity to bring in this group to help with planning and planning services because of the lack of direction of not having a person necessarily in charge of the planning department. Now that we have someone, there will be the opportunity for this organization to help with long-term projects and provide some third-party support to the planning division. So we could expect some expenditures this year. And those are all the questions I received, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez and staff, for being so diligent and getting us these notes. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Attorney Dupay Bruno, please address public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School Board Policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the Board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. If you completed a public comment card, please provide it to staff. Public comment will be held at the podium, in the center aisle, and in front. Please be advised that the Board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. However, at the conclusion of public comment, the Chair or the Superintendent may respond. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 0169.1 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning. Per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20 speakers or less. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. Madam Chair, there are two speakers who would like to address the Board at this briefing.
Please make sure you've completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. The card is public record, identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff or follow-up. The cards are located with the staff. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Board but did not fill out a comment card...
Madam Chair, would you like me to proceed?
Please.
Will the following individuals please line up? Dr. Edward Drass, Tara Jenner.
Hi, Dr. Edward Drass. That was quite a PowerPoint presentation. I now know who the ISSOC is, but I can see from the direction of the meeting, the agenda today with the half-cent sales tax, this is something that's going to change, and it's going to be an issue for the Board members to be able to do this, because one of the current Board members voted in the 6-1 vote against the original tax, and several of the current new Board members ran on a platform of no tax or repealing the tax. So it's going to be an issue you have to deal with. Now, regarding the ISSOC, they said that the expenditures were consistent with the plan and approved project list. I'm not sure what that means, but I assume that's the capital plan, and the project list came from the Capitol Committee. There is currently $154.5 million surplus that's been collected since 2019. I'm wondering if that's been earmarked, or if that's just kind of floating around in the budget at this point. And key question, is there an agency analyzing the proposed demographic growth of the county? And if so, are the projections verifiable? Because all of this has been based on projection. Current occupancy rates for district seats. I came away from this seeing a $6,000 surplus, and this would be borne out by the response after Ian, where five damaged facilities had students transferred into existing classrooms and seats. Currently, the district's cost per student is $9,500. Some private schools are educating students for $4,000 or less with excellent results, so the doctrine of efficient operation comes into play. And have you considered other solutions, for instance, 12-month use of the facilities? Now, I'm not opposed to the half-cent sales tax after having reviewed alternative methods of raising revenue. I know I hear your gasps, but such tax may be the most equitable way to collect funds since it involves everyone paying a share to support the public education system. What I am opposed to is a government system that sees a potentially unlimited source of revenue and then does not operate efficiently with an eye toward greatest value per dollar spent. I'm also opposed to any system that incorporates poorly thought-out projects to increase spending with the intent to convince the naive public that, quote, "We need these dollars for our children's education," without justification of expenditures or stating a return value for each dollar spent. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Tara Jenner. Sitting on a board, I recognize that there are people that always come and complain, and it's often nice to hear them actually come up with some proposed solutions. And so with that in mind, I'm going to make a few comments today. I do disagree with Dr. Drass. I have a problem with the half-cent sales tax. I always have. I have not met a sales tax or a toll that's ever met its sunshine and been repealed. It's always been extended, and it's always been increased, because where there's money, government always spends it. Having said that, I'd like to propose some things that I don't think that the Board or the school district has had a chance to look at. I do understand your concerns about the middle school, and I do understand your concerns about the charter school students returning back to the high school afterwards. But I'd like to just comment on this. I know that you have IB programs, you have Cambridge programs, you have all these other wonderful programs in the school, but when I look at the percentage of the kids that attend those particular curriculum formats, the success rate that they have in getting the degrees, like the diploma for IB and all that, is significantly lower than the percentage of students that go through dual enrollment and successfully complete their college classes, possibly with an entire AA under their belt before they complete high school. So how about this, looking to see whether or not it's possible to take some high schools and say, hey, this is a high school where we're going to have kids that are specifically geared for advanced education, and then have them go half the day to the Edison or to FGCU for the dual enrollment program. And then the other half of the day, they can do their, call it high school level that needs to be done at the campus level. And then flip-flop, you have a half a day where you don't have...I'm sorry if I'm not making a lot of sense here, but you'd have a half a day for each side of the spectrum, and you can free up all those seats for middle school students. And so that might be a way to increase seats for middle school students without having to necessarily build additional high schools. Just a thought, something to consider there. The other thing that I would also like to say real quickly, another way we can save some money, this is one of my personal favorites, put a referendum back on the ballot to go back to five at-large school board members. We would save the cost of two at-large school board members that we currently have. We would decrease all of their additional expenses, bonuses, retirement pays, and all that as well. And we would avoid the problem of having each individual focusing exclusively on their area, only to talk about their area interests when they come here in front of the Board because of Sunshine laws, because you would be required to actually know what's going on in the entire district. Right now, four out of the seven can vote against my interest, and I have absolutely no say in who.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment. Dr. Bernier or Attorney Dupay Bruno, is there anything you would like to address regarding public comment?
Just briefly, some of the ideas suggested by both speakers are worth taking a look at and further examination, so I appreciate it. There are some other suggestions that I don't think are feasible, and a better understanding of how we generate FTE for full-time and get the full $8,000 that we receive plus from the state. I think we just...it gives me an idea that we have to not only continue to educate with ISOC, but continue to help our community understand and know how we are funded and what the various funding sources of money can and can't do. But I do appreciate people coming forward. There's some good suggestions there that are worth taking a look at.
I have no comments, thank you. Okay, thank you for your comments. Comments next on the agenda is good of the order. Does any member have any comment on good of the order? We can just go down the roll, or down the line. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. One of the things that has come up recently is Dr. Kim McDougall has suggested that I attend with Chief Gomez a hearing up in the Senate next week in Tallahassee. I'm going to actually ask, Madam Chair, if I have permission to ask Chief Gomez to address more specifics in regards to this.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent. Yes, so just bringing you a little update in regards to what Chair Fisher, member now, Fisher is talking about, the Senate bills on deregulations, Senate bills...
this is not fiscal appropriations.
Policy.
Fiscal policy committee in the Senate. They meet on December 12 at 9:30, and we have been asked to consider attending that day, to ask a member of the board, in this case, or chair, to testify and to bring some comments in regards to what this, you know, what that means to a district like ours and in support of, and other comments that we may have.
And this would also be along with other members throughout the state. I know some of the, the members from FSBA had suggested that, you know, it's more of just, you know, showing a support and of deregulation to our Senate. It would be then, you know, if there's no issue, it would then be a good cause item for the travel. I believe we're looking at doing one night, it would be, and if, can arrange any other meetings afterwards. I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware of this and if there's any issues.
Any comments from any board members? Mr. Persons?
Having done this last year, I think it's a great idea. I mean, anytime we can get our face as the face of the board before the legislators, it never hurts at all. And the deregulations is definitely going to help not only our district, but districts all over the state. So I'm all for it.
I agree. Any other comments?
I just have a question.
Ms. Jordan.
So, if I may.
Yes.
I'm not sure who's going to answer this. Is it through FSBA or FSBA members are going? When you just mentioned FSBA.
It was mentioned at the FSBA conference. So I know others are going up there. So it was a suggestion for, I believe, you know, either the, the chairs or anyone else chosen by the board to go up and again support deregulation, so, in front of the Senate Committee, the Policy Committee, so. And this was a request originally through, it was suggested by Dr. McDougall. Kim McDougall. Thank you, Mr. Gomez.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to bring up real quick is also, I will be attending, I believe it's next week, continuing listening, listening sessions with business members in the Cape Coral Chamber of Commerce. I believe it'll be Island Coast next week to listen to what our business community and what they're looking for in regards to our schools as well as technical colleges. So outside that, I'll leave the rest of my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mrs. Giavennelli.
I'll keep this short because we were all in attendance today of the groundbreaking, I guess groundbreaking, not groundbreaking, grand opening, I guess, of Fort Myers Beach Elementary, and that was exciting to see the new school and just all the kids excited. That was actually, it was, it was a pleasure to be there today, and I just wanted to bring that up. And I just hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I think, is this our only meeting this month? So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I'll see everybody in the new year. Everybody have a nice relaxing, take your time and enjoy for yourself. Enjoy that time off. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica.
Thank you. So I have in my notes Dunbar High School exclamation point. I was able to pull it up on Facebook and then project it onto my screen, and my screen is like the size of my room because I have to watch sports on it all the time. So I was able to see them, really, really see them play. My heart breaks for them, but they had an amazing season. And Dr. Bernier has discussed several times just sort of the attitude of the team. They don't hang their heads. They've lost, they've won a lot of last-minute games this year. Didn't just happen once, it happened several times. And I'm sure you all read the article in the paper on Coach Sammy Brown and the amazing job he's done with that program. I have attended the Dunbar High School graduation almost every year since I've been on the board, and he is at the entrance, making sure the ties are on, and the ties are tied and the correct shoes are on. He's about, as, as has been my experience with just about every football coach I've met in our district, he's about shaping young boys to become men who are positive contributors to the community. So I'm just really proud of Dunbar, but my heart breaks for them at the same time. Fort Myers Beach Elementary, today was a great, a great event. Dr. Kohler's nod to her husband was particularly impactful, and it sort of proves what Dr. Bernier says at the table every time we promote someone to an AP or a principal, which is, it's a family commitment. And I guarantee you, her husband was tearing up as well. Yeah. And I guarantee you that she went home every day and he heard about it, and he was supportive. And it was just, it was, I just thought it was wonderful to see that kind of support and commitment from a family. FSBA training, I thought last week was really good. There were two sessions in particular that stuck out for me. One was the last day, and I'd like to take the temperature of the board about the discussing policy on AI. It seems like that's becoming more and more necessary, the permissible use of AI, training surrounding AI, all of that. I'd love to, I'd love to undertake that in the next year. And then the other, what was the other one? Oh, the other one is the guy who came in who used to be a high school principal, middle school principal, who gets kids in his school to be, to come back and be teachers. I can't remember his name, the rock and roll guy. Thank you. So I wonder, and I know, Dr. Bernier, I don't need to tell you this because I know that, I think in that session you were communicating with your staff, but do we have a program of teacher shadowing in our schools? You don't have to answer that now. I just throw it out there. I know that my, my son is considering the teacher-coach route, and I told him to go to his principal and ask if he could shadow a teacher for the day, but I don't know that we have a, an official program. And I don't want that principal to say yes, given my position, and a whole bunch of other kids go, well, he could do it, why can't I do it? But if we have a program, then everybody who might be interested could do it.
The hot Lee.
Just interestingly, and in sort of a funny way, I mentioned this to a couple of you, we were mentioned two times in this year's ethics training. Two times. That's all I'm going to say about that. And finally, Mr. Fisher, you will, I'm sorry.
In a good way.
What do I want? What do I want? That's all I'm going to say. Mr. Fisher, you will kill it in Tallahassee if you bring the same energy and focus to Tallahassee that you brought to today's speech.
I thought you were going to say it's karaoke.
No, no, I wasn't there for karaoke, but that you brought to today's speech, you're going to kill it for us in Tallahassee. So thank you. Those are my comments.
Mrs. Jordan.
I think Ms. Patrica has said, had said everything for me. Thank you so much. Except for last night, also, we were, we were at the.
Teacher.
Broadway Palm, where the teachers received their grant awards from the foundation, and the amazing, they didn't share with us what they were getting their awards for, but I was asking them because I really wanted to know what were they getting their awards for. And so the stories that they were receiving, like bottles for each child, they have their own special plastic bottle so they can fill it up with water. Edison Park is one. One was for like more greens and.
Gardening.
Gardening. Thank you. And it was just amazing what they were receiving. And one, I know that someone in the district had received something, and everybody was like, the district is receiving a grant? But it was for children who were in, oh my gosh, I'm sorry, my brain just went, that they could take these tools out to different schools and let them use them for different classes. So it was just amazing that the amount of money that was raised and that was given to the teachers so that they could do things with it. And of course, the ribbon cutting and everything else that everybody has said. And Dunbar, we're, I'm really proud of Dunbar that they made it there, and I was watching that too, and it was, they made it there. So I'm proud of them.
Mr. Persons.
Yes, FSBA. It was, it was good. The networking is always fantastic. What you learn from other district people is, is amazing. Even got to talk to some superintendents, and that, that was also enlightening. The two that I went to were a little different than yours that I found great. One was the year-round school. There's a couple of them up in Charlotte County and seemed to be going very well, but I just had no clue how it worked. And they still only go 180 days of school. It's not like they go all year round. The other thing that I found was because the early start times, and that is definitely going to be a problem. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, state legislators. You don't always get it right. But it's something we're going to have to work with and plan. We have a couple of years, or actually, probably three years to get it done. But it was good. I always enjoy those conferences and always learn something, so it's well worth it. That's all.
Ms. Jordan.
Can I just, and I forgot to say, to give Mr. Dupay Bruno props, she was there at FSBA doing a class for us, and I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't forgotten. She did a great job.
Ms. Morgan.
So unfortunately, you didn't cover most of my notes, guys, so it's going to be, whatever. All right. First of all, thank you to Angela Nader, our Director of Early Childhood, and Jennifer Cupid-McCoy, because they presented at Legal Women Voters. They did a terrific job. Ms. Nader was talking about how we do early childhood, and then Dr. Cupid-McCoy talked about how we were collaborating with the rest of the community to, you know, create synergy around early childhood. So that was great. I want to thank Professional Development for their Pulse newsletter. I thought that was great, and so I, that kind of information really helps me as a board member. CTE hosted their first District Career Advisory Board meeting with 70 attendees. I think that rocks. I mean, this is exactly the kind of engagement we need to make in light of our conversation about the technical college, the kind of people we need to be talking to over time about what we're doing. I want to congratulate Cape Coral Technical College, LPN, LPN program. They regained their top ranking. Forty-nine students in our elementary, middle, and high school were selected for all-state honors, so I'm sure we'll be seeing them in front of us at a future meeting. I want to congratulate Alex Dorzansky, School District 2024, Principal of the Year, East Lee County High School Assistant Principal, Kathleen Stevens, Assistant Principal of the Year, Nora Aviles, and ESOL Instructional Support Staff Member at Calusa Middle, selected as the 24 school-related Employee of the Year. Congratulations to all of them. I know everybody does great work, but it's nice to, you know, highlight our staff. I also went to FSBA. I sent out a lengthy email to board members capturing my notes from the various sessions. I double down on Ms. Patrica's comments about AI. We saw the most incredible AI presentation, basically saying that we have an obligation today, not tomorrow, today, to get going on exploring AI. And I go into that a little bit of detail in my notes. There were two comments made at the late start time that I thought were just fantastic. One school district is talking to their delegation, and maybe there are others, about creating a bus driver license instead of a CDL, because the bus driver license doesn't require the same things that CDL does, and CDL doesn't provide some of the training that bus drivers need. And that could make a huge difference in terms of our ability to get bus drivers. The other thing they do is they provide perfect attendance bonuses for bus drivers. They pay them every two weeks. And then at the end of the year, they double down on, on their payment. So just two ideas that I picked up at FSBA. I want to just say to the superintendent, based on that teacher suspension hearing this afternoon, or this morning, this afternoon, whatever, clearly we have some process flaws. And that, we need to, we need to know more about where the breakdowns were in terms of that misconduct, that alleged misconduct, because you read that, the allegations, and they're pretty, pretty bad. And finally, I want to compliment you on running the meeting today. I thought you did a terrific job. So I thought it went well, and you handled yourself really well. So compliments to you.
Thank you.
And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. That was, my comment was going to be, I just thank the board for supporting me in this new role. Appreciate all of your help, advice, mentorship, and looking forward to having a successful year-round up here on the dais with all of you. Do I have anything for Ms. Dupay Bruno?
I actually have a question. Tomorrow, you're having your master board training. In the past, the board attorney has attended those trainings. However, I have heard from your trainer that most jurisdictions, the board attorney does not attend. So I wanted to know if you wanted me to attend or if I was not needed for that particular training.
Board? I'm kind of getting a feeling, Ms. Dupay Bruno, you can be excused from that tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Or, Dr. Bernier.
Board members have covered just about all of it. I don't know that I have a lot to add. I think I'll reserve any additional comments for this evening. Thank you for a well-run meeting, Ms. Vice Chair.
Tonight, we will have a student performance at 5:45, followed by our action meeting at 6 o'clock. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned, and the time is 4:02 PM. Have a great afternoon.